So, good morning, everyone. I am calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of the Committee of the Hall. My name is Elizabeth Glidden and I'm the Chair of this committee. And if we could try to keep those to a minimum. I am joined by my colleagues, Councilmembers Gordon, Conno, Bender, Councilmember Andrew Johnson, Yang, Quincy, Worsami, and Paul Masano. We are quorum of the committee. The others, I believe, are about to walk out. We have Councilmember Frye and Councilmember Reich and Councilmember Johnson, who is about to walk in. Councilmember Goodman wanted me to let you know that she wishes she could be here, but she has a family funeral that she has to attend, and she will, of course, be here on Friday. So first, I just want to say thank you very much to everyone for spending your time to be with us. We know this is a very important meeting. We understand quite clearly the gravity of some of the decisions before us, and we appreciate that you have taken time to be here today. We do, as you can see, have a sign language interpreter, and there are some other language interpreters that are set up in Room 319, and they would be available to assist anyone or come with them. And for people who are here standing up, just for you to know, Room 319, which is right across the hall, is open and available to you, and the meeting is live streamed there. I know that most people like to be here, kind of closer to us, and I understand that, but just a lot of people who may at some point want to have a seat, and there's that opportunity for you. Excuse me. And we now have been joined by Councilmembers Reich, Council President Johnson, Councilmember Frye. So, thank you. We have three items on our agenda for today. The first are the two that I know that the public is here to listen to. The first one is a petition to amend the city charter, and I wanted to kind of take through what we had talked about in agreement with both campaigns as being a sequence of events. Our city clerk will first just give an overview. His name is Casey Carl. He will give an overview of what are the questions that are before the City Council for our committee meeting today. We have, we know that being able to respond to legal arguments about what is permissible to put on the ballot as a charter amendment is an important question to each campaign, and so we have said each campaign may have 15 minutes, up to 15 minutes if they would like, and we have a timer that is just to help you with kind of knowing that time, and each campaign will use that time as they wish. They were also told we would help if you wanted to use a PowerPoint or any other materials, and the campaigns have made different decisions with that. And then the city attorney will also present an overview of her opinion, which has been posted online and available since Thursday of last week. So, Mr. Carl, if you would please start us off with an overview.
Good morning.
Item number one.
Good morning, Madam Vice President. Members of the committee, my name is Casey Carl. I have the privilege of serving as clerk of the city of Minneapolis. As mentioned, there are two citizen petitions proposing to amend the Minneapolis City Charter pending consideration before this body. Both of these petitions were submitted under the provisions that are set forth in Minnesota statutes, Section 410.12 subdivision 3. I've been asked to help frame the context of the decision that's before the body this morning, so I will summarize the proceedings that have taken place thus far on the petitions. The first petition was submitted by the Vote 15 Minnesota Committee through its Chair, Ginger Jensen, who was with us this morning. This petition seeks to establish and to codify in the city charter a minimum wage to be paid to workers in Minneapolis of $15 per hour, which, if approved, would be phased in by the year 2020 for employers with 500 or more employees, and by the year 2022 for employers with fewer than 500 employees. This petition was submitted to the Charter Commission on July 13 and was transmitted to the city the next business day by filing with the Office of City Clerk. As required under the enabling statute, the city clerk validated that petition and reported it to be sufficient and in compliance with statutory requirements for such petitions on July 20. At its regular meeting then on July 22, the City Council referred the subject matter of this petition to this committee for its review, evaluation, and a formal recommendation for action by the City Council consistent with the procedural rules of the City Council and subject to the provisions of Minnesota statutes, Section 410.12 subdivision 4. Specifically, a valid citizen petition to amend a home rule charter must be considered by the governing body of the municipality. This is the City Council. The statute speaks to the Council's duty to fix the form of the ballot question, which means that the Council has a duty to determine the appropriate ballot language to submit the question to the electorate. The statute goes further and requires that the ballot language be sufficient to identify the proposed amendment clearly and to distinguish it from every other question on the ballot. Thus, the question now before this body is the determination of the exact language to describe the proposed amendment so that it clearly captures the intent of the petitioners and so that it is easily distinguishable from any other questions on the ballot. Under state law, ballot questions must be framed as a question to which voters may answer either in the affirmative by marking a box labeled "yes" or in the negative by marking a box labeled "no." As directed by City Council, the city attorney prepared draft ballot language for your consideration, a copy of which was posted to the city's website this past Thursday, July 28. Copies of that ballot question have also been included in your briefing materials this morning, and copies were also made available to the public for this meeting. That draft ballot language complies with the statutory formatting requirement. The city attorney requested that I provide her draft ballot language to the petitioner, which I did via email to the committee chair on Thursday, July 28. Ms. Jensen responded with some requested edits to the draft language, which was provided then to the city attorney. The city attorney was amenable to the edits that was requested by the petitioner, and copies of the revised ballot language reflecting the edits requested by the petitioning group have been distributed in the agenda packets at your desks. For the sake of the viewing audience and those in the chamber who may not have a printed copy of the revised ballot language, which has now been proposed as amended, I'd like to read the text. The question would be, shall the Minneapolis City Charter be amended to require all employees working within the geographic boundaries of the city of Minneapolis to be paid a $15 minimum wage by their employers, to be phased in starting at $10 as of August 1, 2017, and increasing to $15 by the year 2020 for employers with 500 or more employees, and by the year 2022 for employers with fewer than 500 employees, and increasing thereafter based upon the cost of living adjustment as measured by the U.S. Department of Labor, such charter provisions to be enforced by the city of Minneapolis and permitting private civil actions in a court of law? Pursuant to Minnesota statutes, Section 205.16 subdivision 4, the clerk must submit all ballot questions to the county auditor no less than 74 days before the general election. For the 2016 general election, that statutory deadline for the submission of ballot questions is Friday, August 26, which is approximately three weeks from today. In addition, pursuant to Minnesota statutes, Chapter 410.10 subdivision 2, the clerk is required to publish the entire language of the actual amendment, not just the approved ballot language, in the city's official newspaper once each week or two successive weeks prior to the election. The purpose of this publication is to ensure that all voters have sufficient notice of the actual text of the proposed amendment before the election. As a city of the first class, the statute also requires this same publication must be made in a newspaper having an aggregate regular paid circulation of at least 25,000 copies for the same two-week time period. Thus, the city clerk will need to publish the actual charter amendment in Finance and Commerce, which is the city's official newspaper, and in the Star Tribune, which satisfies the general circulation requirement for cities of the first class. To be enacted, a ballot question proposing to amend a home rule charter requires the affirmative vote of at least 51% of all votes actually cast on the amendment. If enacted, the amendment becomes legally effective and is codified 30 days after the election unless a later date is provided. In this case, there is a phased approach to full implementation contemplated within the text of the actual amendment. That completes my review of the statutory procedures governing consideration of this proposed amendment. Again, as I stated, it's the duty of this body at this point in the proceedings to determine the form of the ballot question by approving language to be submitted to the electorate. And with that, I've concluded my prepared remarks, Madam Vice President, and am happy to stand to any questions the committee may have.
Thank you. I don't see any questions. So, and I just wanted to clarify that, because there haven't some questions about this. Traditionally, the council has voted on charter amendments in their committee where it is reviewed prior to going to the full council, and we would anticipate to do that again today. So, we will be taking votes today, so I know there was some question about that. Ms. Jensen, I mean, this time is yours, and so if you want to help us understand how you'd like to use it.
Yeah, we're going to take a couple minutes and hear from Stephen Suffrage and a few others, and then our lawyers will speak to the council.
Thank you.
My name is Stephen Suffrage. I work for 210 East Lake McDonald's. I believe the workers and supporters of this have gone out and filled out all this, the proper things that needed to be done to move this to ballot. I might not know a lot about government. I might not know a lot about the extent of what is going on, but I know that I do understand one thing, and we deserve this money, and we deserve this money. Here recently, I have had to go to the hospital, so I'm not doing too well. I have an infection in my arm. Stated that stress could have caused it, and they didn't know what caused it. But I'm here to support my fellow coworkers, my fellow fast food workers, janitor workers, and all the workers here in Minnesota that deserve 15, because we do. Thank you. And have it nice, there.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tanise Hodges, and I'm here to support the vote for us to be able to vote for 15 an hour, and this is why. For me, it comes down to just one simple thing, quality of life, and everybody here wants to live a quality life, but they don't understand that without 15 an hour, we're not living a quality life. Our children are not living a quality life. They're going to sleep hungry. We are out here without lights. We are out here without housing because the housing market is too much. If I make $9.50 an hour and I work 160 hours in one month, I'm still only bringing home $500 every two weeks after taxes. But if it was $15 an hour, it would be $880 more for me to work with, so I'm not just paying rent. So my children ain't going to sleep hungry. So our children aren't sitting up here crying in school irritated because they couldn't get a good night's sleep. So our parents do have the time to invest in their children and give them the love and attention they need at home first, because parents are the first teachers. So it's important that, at the end of the day, we're all people, and everybody deserves the quality of life, and just making this small amendment and adjustment will give that to so many people. Thank you.
Good morning, Council. My name's Jess Alexander. I'm an organizer with the Coalition, and I just wanted to add to what these people just said. We've been out talking not just to citizens and voters in Minneapolis, but also to workers at their place of work. There's a bunch of cards that we've collected in support of this effort, and I want to point out that we've talked to well over 300 people. There's about 300 cards here. To not listen to this would be an insult. It's an effort, and it's a risk for a lot of these workers to even have this conversation while they're working and to fill out these cards. This proves how much of a risk people are willing to take and how greatly people need it. So we're going to deliver these cards to each council member in a few minutes, but I just wanted to say that for you to not listen to this and not take these cards into serious consideration would be an insult to the effort and the risk that these workers have taken to push this forward.
How you doing today? My name is Londo French. I'm with MFT 59, one of the organizers for ESPs. I've been working at a high school for 16 years, and sometimes the first time I meet a parent is graduation. Why? Because they're working. How can that be effective education system if the parent can't participate in the education system? They need to make more. They need to make $15 an hour so they don't have two and three jobs. Minneapolis Public Schools, we have childcare workers that make less than $15 an hour right now. That's a city job. That's a public job, public. The city of Minneapolis, park workers make less than $10 an hour starting now. That's a city job. Something needs to change. You guys need to help it. You guys need to put it on the ballot. Let's vote on it. Let the city, let the people decide, all right? Let's not let the people from outside this community decide. Let's not let the business people who don't live here decide. They have no vested interests.
My name's Tyler Vassar. I'm a minimum wage worker and a full-time college student here in Minneapolis. I work for Jimmy John's, delivering food by bike around town, and I can tell you from what I've personally seen that this is truly a tale of two cities here in Minneapolis. There are affluent areas with bars and restaurants and people on the sidewalks, and then less than a mile away, you have families worrying about paying rent. You have families worrying about whether their children can play outside for fear of stray bullets. Now, the legal reasons being touted as the reasons for voting against this initiative are not questions of legality of the ballot initiative, rather a political question and a question of which side City Hall is on. And by voting against this initiative, you will be showing everyone in this city that you're on the side of big business. You side with their interests at the expense of the people of Minneapolis, at the expense of the over 100,000 workers who would directly benefit from a $15 minimum wage. Now, Mayor Hodges and many of you on this council were voted in on a call for fighting racial and economic inequity, yet in the two years that you've been here, you have done little to address these issues, and you've done nothing to address poverty wages. You've done nothing to address poverty wages. A $15 minimum wage is the best way we can start moving in the direction of closing the enormous gap between the rich and the poor in this city. Now, I'm prepared to do what it takes to win $15 an hour in Minneapolis, and if you vote this down, I intend to file a lawsuit with other low-wage workers, get $15 an hour on the ballot, and we are confident that we will win. We are confident that we will win. It is a time to address poverty wages in our city. Thank you, and let the people vote. Let the people vote.
Chair of members of the City Council, my name is Karen Marty. I'm an attorney. I was consulted by the 15 Now Coalition some months ago, wanting to know if this was a possible charter amendment topic. Let me tell you why they found me. Actually, I don't know how they found me, but I'm a former city attorney. I did that for 15 years, working full-time for cities. I worked first in a charter city, and then I worked in a Minnesota former charter city where I actually ended up litigating whether or not the charter was still valid. That experience certainly put me in good shape to later represent a charter commission. I just finished representing one. I did that for 10 years. I've been practicing now for 35 years. I've done a lot of charter amendments, statutes, ordinances, and litigation, and I can tell you that in this particular case, I can see where the City Council is facing a lot of pressure. You know, when I was working directly in-house, and I've worked as a contract city attorney since I left my full-time city attorney positions, I know the City Council faces tremendous pressures from the public, usually on both sides of a controversial issue. I'm sure that you're facing that. That doesn't relieve you of the responsibility to follow the law, though. I think the city clerk put it very well when he said that your responsibility is to fix the ballot language. That is what the state law gives you as the right and responsibility to do. There is nothing further that you can or should do when you've got a sufficient petition presented to you to amend the charter. The case law is actually quite clear on this point. There is an old case, the Andrews, State Actual Andrews v. Beard case. That one, the court ruled that a matter had to go on the ballot, even though the City Council didn't like it, even though the City Council thought it was oddly written or strangely worded or badly written. The court said, that doesn't matter. None of that matters. The question is, can the court or the City Council veto this proposal? The answer was no. That, you know, the merits of the proposal will be decided at the ballot box. That is not the only case that has made that kind of a decision. There's a great Duluth case from substantially more recently, it's from the '70s at least. In that case, the city also attempted to keep a matter off the ballot because they thought it was bad public policy. The court again said, it may be bad public policy, it may be good public policy, that's not a judicial decision, that's not even a City Council decision when you have a sufficient petition to put it on the ballot. The court recognized that, as a standard, the courts will give a legislative body, such as a City Council, substantial discretion in adopting laws and proceeding forward in different manners, but when you have a sufficient petition, the court will give the writers of that even more discretion in how they word it and whether or not it goes forward. That means that this bad battle over the sufficiency of the petitions has been, it's over. You need to simply approve appropriate ballot language, and what you have before each day is good, and put it on the ballot. Now, both cases that I've mentioned recognize that a city can keep a matter off the ballot if it is manifestly unconstitutional or clearly in violation of state law, and that's where that Hohmann case comes in, that the city attorney cites so much in her memorandum. That was a perhaps well-intentioned matter, but let's face it, it was flatly illegal. You cannot distribute marijuana, or could not at that point in time, without violating state law and federal law. There was no reason to put it on the ballot. The city would simply be in a position of creating clinics that violated federal law. Nobody wants to be there. The city attorney's opinion is a lengthy document, but it's based entirely on two hopes, and I don't know that these will hold up in court. One, that the proposed charter amendment is actually an ordinance, and two, that the absence of initiative language in the Minneapolis charter means that those are prohibited. First of all, the proposed charter amendment is not an ordinance. It lacks statutorily required language to make it an ordinance. Even more importantly, there's nothing in state law or anywhere else that defines what goes in a charter and what goes in ordinances. The courts and everyone else have left this up to the voters to choose. State law recognizes that in drafting a charter and in amending a charter, a city may well want to incorporate special laws or general laws that they think are important, or they can leave them out. That's actually stated in state law. The charters in Minnesota all began as special laws from the state legislature. There's nothing magic about the word charter or ordinance that makes it, you know, you can have one be an amendment and one not. The real difference between a charter and ordinances is how important the matters are to the voters, and this case is an excellent example of that. These people have come forward and signed a petition saying that they think this matter is an issue of great importance. That kind of thing belongs in the charter. Now, who is more qualified to determine what are the most important values to protect in any city's charter? That would be the city's residents, the voters. As the city's elected representatives, you serve a critical function in overseeing city government and in handling all of those challenging everyday issues, balancing interests, and keeping things running smoothly. Minneapolis residents appreciate that, but please remember, you have been elected to represent them. When, on those rare occasions, those residents feel like they have not been heard, and they present a matter on petition directly to you to propose a charter amendment, which is allowed, then you should simply put it forward to the voters. That's your only legal obligation, and it's your only legal right. At this point, let the voters decide. If you disagree, you can go out there and speak against it, but this is...
Let her finish, ma'am, if you're...
I'm sorry, yes. This is what the case law requires. The case law is clear. The City Council has very limited discretion in this kind of a matter. Whether you like this proposal or not, you're pretty well, excuse me, you are obligated to simply put it forward and let the voters decide. I urge you to follow the law and place this matter on the ballot as required.
I wanted to ask, if there are for just two more minutes to hear from our votes, we need to spare briefly, is that all right? Just two more minutes? Let me understand what's the request, to hear from whom?
Our other attorney, Bruce Nestor, he wanted to add to...
Mr. Nestor, would you be able to say your comments in two minutes? I, you know, we had talked about 15. I understand this is really important and...
Well, we're not fighting for a $17 an hour minimum wage, but I appreciate having 17 minutes, Madam Vice President Glidden. My name is Bruce Nestor. I'm an attorney in South Minneapolis. It's really my honor to speak today on behalf of the people in this room and the thousands of people who signed the petition, who want the opportunity to vote, to state that the Minneapolis City Charter, which states the fundamental law of this city, must include a provision that provides for a living wage and a minimum wage for people who work within the city of Minneapolis. Now, the opinion that you received from the city attorney, Susan Segal, talks about that the only appropriate matters discussed in a charter are those which relate to the form or structure of government, but that is not language which is found in the statute itself. The statute talks about the ability of a charter to regulate important municipal functions, and we may all from the 18th century believe, or the 19th century, that the only important municipal functions are to pave roads, provide for a police department, or a fire department, or to put sewers in. But what you're hearing from the people in this room today, from the citizens that elected you, from the citizens that want a chance to vote, is that an important municipal function is to provide... function is to provide for the general welfare of the population of the city of Minneapolis.[604.16][604.16](APPLAUSE). And what that means is, the city's fundamental law, the charter, should express that as an appropriate municipal function, and it should regulate it to provide guarantees for the general welfare and for a living wage. That's what people are asking for. Now, this is not a question where there is some clear legal invalidity to the proposed charter amendment. This is not trying to put marijuana dispensaries in the city when state and federal law don't allow it. It's not trying to create a park board when state law doesn't allow a home rule charter to create new governmental authorities. Those are other cases in which courts have upheld the refusal to put a charter amendment on a ballot. At best, this is the disputed legal interpretation. The city attorney relies entirely on this Hohmert case involving the marijuana dispensaries and what is a throwaway paragraph at the end of the decision about the distinction between an ordinance and a charter amendment. There is no case law supported to define these distinctions. There is no statutory language to define these distinctions. This council should place this on the ballot, let the people decide, and if there are legal challenges afterward, those can happen at that time. But in the absence of clear legal invalidity, it is your duty to put it on the ballot, is to let the people to decide, and again, to say the fundamental laws of this city, not just an ordinance that can be changed by one council year to year, the fundamental law of this city is to provide for the municipal duty and function to protect the general welfare, to let people feed their children, pay their rent, and, you know, enjoy their lives. That's what people are asking you, and that's what you should do. Put this on the ballot, let the people vote.[722.11][722.11](APPLAUSE).
Let the people vote! 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 Let the people vote!
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Thank you, and thank you to all the speakers. If you would, I might ask if you might at some point go and just sign up by the city clerks, or able to just have an accurate record that you were here and you gave your testimony?
We are available for questions as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. So next, we were going to hear from our city attorney, Susan Segal, who is going to give a summary of her opinion. And I'll just ask, I know that this is a very emotionally charged room with a lot of people who are here because of an issue important to them, but let us please let her be able to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the council, and people here. This experience standing here right now brings to mind, I think it's a line from a Shakespeare play, I think it's Henry VI, "First thing we do is let's kill all the lawyers." No, I don't mean that seriously or literally, but I know this is a serious, I know this is a serious issue. As Mr. Nestor said, talking about the responsibility of this council is for the general welfare of its people, that provision is already in our charter. It's important to distinguish what's in the opinion of the city attorney's office on this issue versus what is not. The city's authority to enact a minimum wage ordinance is not part of our opinion. That has been provided to the council in a separate attorney-client privileged, attorney-client privileged by vote of this council. So this is a legal issue only. Wait, I'm gonna get the, uh-oh, how do I unlock the...
I think Mr. Carl is gonna come to help you.
Somebody can unlock that. I'll just start talking. I agree with Ms. Marty about what's in front of this council. The role of the council at this stage is to determine, legal determination, is this a lawful proposal to put on the ballot? And it's correct that you are the deciders of whether you want to put this provision on the ballot or not. Either way, and the question of whether the council favors what's in this proposal or not is completely irrelevant. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if you don't like the wording, or you don't like the principle, or you don't think it went far enough and it should call for a $17-an-hour minimum wage, as Mr. Nestor suggested. But, and further, if the, there it goes. If the council finds that the proposal is legal, you have to put it on the ballot and craft a question. If the council finds that the proposal does not meet the legal standard, then the council can decline, and I would say should decline, to transmit the proposal to the ballot. Now, what's the legal standard? The legal standard under established case law is whether the proposal is preempted by or in conflict with any state or federal law or constitutional provision. Is it in conflict with the public policy of the state of Minnesota? Or is it not a proper subject for a charter amendment under Chapter 410? And another way of saying that is, does this proposal conflict with Chapter 410? I'm not gonna go, uh-oh, now what did I do?
Case.
There we go. Okay. Chapter 410, the Minnesota State Constitution, gives exclusive authority to the state legislature to create and give powers to local governmental units. And so the state has enacted legislation to do that. It created statutes set out in Chapter 412 dealing with statutory cities, and then Chapter 410 deals with the process for adopting and amending city charters, and also prescribes the provisions that are allowed to go into charters. And it is on this latter issue where we've rested our opinion. And this notion that Chapter 410 prescribes what can go into an opinion is not a new opinion. It was an independent ground cited by the Minnesota Court of Appeals in the Omont case, and also in looking back through old legal opinions of our office, we have opinions from, to Mayor Donald Fraser, expressing the same theory. I think it was on a proposal dealing with affordable housing. So what does 410 include? It includes provisions for the governance structure of a city, whether you're gonna adopt mayor council, council city manager, et cetera, the scope of authority, what departments you're gonna have, and the division of powers and the organization of the municipality. Now, Chapter 410 also contains a provision, Section 410.20. And what that section states is that it allows charters to, quote-unquote, "provide for" citizen petitions for legislation, and these are referred to commonly as initiative and referendum. An initiative relates to voter initiatives to place ordinances on the ballot. Referendum refers to repeal of those ordinances. The Minneapolis Charter simply does not provide for citizen petitions for legislation. That's even all the more clear with our new plain language charter, shortened charter. There just is no word, section, or provision in our charter, quote-unquote, "providing for that right." Other cities who have initiative and referendum have whole charter chapters related to this right and the related process for adopting initiatives and referenda. For example, if you look at the city of Bloomington, City Charter, Chapter 5, the title to that chapter is Initiative, Referendum, and Recall. Same with the city of Winona, same with any number of other cities in the state of Minnesota. Our charter simply does not have such a section. The petitioners have argued that somehow or another, with the adoption of our new plain language charter, that we've adopted broader powers and somehow incorporated this right of initiative. That's simply not true. And I know Barry Clegg, our Charter Commission Chair, is here, and I also want to point out that my gratitude to Barry, because I sent drafts of both opinions to him to review, he did that in his personal capacity as an expert in charter matters, to get his input and insight and comments before I finalized these memos, and I really appreciate him doing that. And I know he also distributed a letter to the council voicing his agreement with our So what did the new plain language do? It modernized provisions of the charter. It eliminated some outdated sections, but it contained no substantive changes. The new charter didn't expand the scope of the city powers. The city claims broad powers in its charter, in the old charter, and in the same charter, same language is used, powers possessed by municipal corporations at common law. A section of the new charter in that same article states that the charter expressly preserves settled interpretations of provisions under the prior charter. So the Omont ruling is still good law. There just is no language providing for initiative. Now, turning to the question of whether this proposal is an ordinance or a charter, as Ms. Marty talked about, well, that depends on the subject matter that's contained in the proposal. The proposal here for the minimum wage doesn't guide the city in its own operations. For example, if the proposal said that the city should not pay less than a minimum wage to its own employees, arguably, that might be a proper charter amendment, because it relates to how the city operates and functions. This proposal is legislative, and it guides how other employers in the city of Minneapolis are to conduct their business. So it's legislative in nature. In fact, it's very similar to minimum wage statutes and ordinances enacted by states and in other cities. For example, it's very similar to the San Francisco minimum wage ordinance. And none of the cities cited on the, included on the National Employment Law Project's website, none of those cities have adopted a minimum wage provision through the vehicle of a charter amendment. We're not aware of any either, from our research. In their memo, they go on to talk about the fact, well, in our charter, we just had a charter amendment on the ballot dealing with liquor to food ratios, about our liquor regulations. Well, first, state general statutes, such as Chapter 410, supersede again and control the provisions of a municipal charter. Second, Chapter 410 specifically references liquor restrictions in charter in two different sections, so it's clearly permitted under Chapter 410 and not in conflict with. It just dictates the number of votes you need to alter that. And then, in conclusion, just saying it again, we believe the minimum wage proposal constitutes citizen petition for an ordinance. Our charter doesn't provide for that, and therefore, we believe it's in conflict with Chapter 410.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Segal. So we have some items before us. I think what I would like to do first is probably, I think, the easier item, in a sense, but that is, I would like for us to vote on and approve ballot language. I know there will be more discussion and debate on what is the bigger second question, but I have frankly no doubt, no matter how we vote as a council, this might be involved in some legal action moving forward. So, Mr. Carl, I know that you had passed out, and I honestly just can't find it, there is a small amendment to the language that we had worked on, looking for ginger, worked on in agreement with Ms. Jensen, that was their suggestion for amending the initial proposal, and I would like to move that as ballot language. And can you tell me where council members would find that?
In the, Madam Vice President, in the packets with the agenda on the top should be a copy of the amended language. It has red text that shows the changes that were requested by the citizen petition group and which were acceptable to the city attorney, and which I read into the record just a moment ago.
Okay. So I will go ahead and move that item if people would like it read fully again. We're happy to do that. And again, this is a language that we had worked on in cooperation with the campaign. All right? So I'm not seeing a request for that. So all in approval, please say aye. Aye. Oppose. So that would be the language for the ballot. And so now we're on to a question about whether this is a proper subject for being in the city charter as an amendment, whether to forward this, or whether, for the legal reasons stated by Ms. Segal, this is not a proper subject to place before the voters as a ballot measure. And I will go ahead and speak first on this issue. I'm not seeing other council members in queue. This is, without doubt, I think, one of the more difficult issues that I have had before me as a council member in 11 years of being on the city council for a number of reasons. One is just the, you know, as I said at the beginning of this meeting, the gravity of this issue, that we have a campaign that has gone and obtained thousands of signatures to do what they are required to do, to ask to put this on the ballot in front of voters. I will tell you what I hear from my constituents, and what I hear honestly around the city, is that there is urgency, urgency from almost everyone that I talk to in asking for action around raising the wage. And it's just as simply as I'm gonna say it. You're gonna find different ways people say it, maybe different numbers they even throw out. Mr. Nestor talked about 17, and I'm not kidding. It's, you know, this is very serious business. You know, I think every single one of us went out on national night, out last night, who are council members. I'm sure many who are here as well were also at a variety of events. And I can tell you what I heard from people that I talked to is, they almost frankly unanimously talked about the importance of raising the wage. This is also, I think, a difficult issue for me personally because of this whole issue of, "We're not voting on the merits. We are voting on a different question, a separate question to whether you agree with the merits or you don't agree with the merits." And I can say, you know, I am at ease in my heart with how I feel on the merits. I have, not as early as some of my other colleagues, who have talked about raising the wage at the city level even as early as a couple years ago, but I have since January of this year talked publicly about my support for raising the wage at the city level in the 15 Now! campaign. I have participated in a national organization that, as one of its policy plans, asks for cities to raise the wage at the city level. So that is how I feel personally about the issue. This is an opinion that I've had a lot of frankly difficulty with thinking through. I know that Ms. Segal knows that I have, you know, I don't think I often kind of waver on these kinds of issues so much. And again, I think it's because of the conflict between my heart and my head and trying to understand what's the right thing to do on this. But even as recently as Monday, I've been thinking about what is the right thing to do, and had some different thoughts in my head, and trying to read all the materials, really study all the materials. And I will be moving today a motion that this, in accordance with the city attorney's opinion, that this is not a proper subject for the ballot.[1795.11][1795.11](APPLAUSE). And I appreciate knowing this is a room full of people who disagree with what I have just said. So I'm asking, I think, maybe I'll just end my comments here, not say more, but I have made the motion. I'll ask if my colleagues have any comments themselves, and then we will take a vote. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I support an increased minimum wage, but I support taking the reins, showing leadership as an elected and doing it the right way, conducting engagement, conducting engagement, drafting a policy, hammering out the micro details of implementation, enforcement, and ultimately passing a policy that works for people and is functional. I do not support legislation via referendum, and I'll tell you why. I will tell you why I don't support legislation via referendum. The reality is, is that many of these issues are extremely complex. When you do legislation via referendum, you are forced to set the language in place six, sometimes eight months in advance of a vote. And inevitably, the nuance of these complex issues does require changes to be made. I'm proud, I'm very proud to have been one of the authors of the paid sick ordinance that passed just a couple of months ago that will help people. And you may not think that's a big deal, but the reality is, it is a big deal. In the last 48 hours, in the last 48 hours before we pass an ordinance...
Also, Councilmember Frye, I'm going to ask if you can just pause for a moment. I'm just going to ask if you pause for a moment, Councilmember Frye. I'm just going to ask your permission, please. If we could just let him, you know, and you will be able to record what he says and all those things, just to allow him to state his reasons, and we'll be able to...
In the last 48 hours before that legislation was passed a couple of months ago, significant changes were made that allowed an employee to enforce their rights, that gave the employees' rights of appellate appeal, and that literally changed significant parts of the ordinance indisputably for the better. The blunt measure of a referendum does not allow for that. This is not a comment on minimum wage. This is a comment on legislation via referendum, which I strongly oppose. Brexit is one example where it didn't work. Prop 8, Prop 8 is another example where it didn't work. When you have legislation via referendum, whether it's via state or via municipality, there are instances where you can have 20 and sometimes 30 different issues on the ballot. This is my job, and I'm accountable based on that job. I work hard to study the different issues. Everybody else they have, people have families to take care of, they've got jobs to do, they're in positions where inevitably, they're not conducting all of the research necessary to pass a functional ordinance. And I believe strongly that while an increased minimum wage is essential to help the workers in our city, I simultaneously believe strongly that a referendum is not the mechanism for doing it. You know, I'd like Councilmember Glidden, who, by the way, has shown great leadership, like Councilmember Glidden stated, you know, having this effort to engage voters, to undergo a petition, it's arduous and it's difficult. And, you know, in the end of the day, it does provide the feedback as well as momentum necessary to ultimately get something passed. That's the reality. For that, you know, you can be proud. Now, it doesn't change my mind on the legislation via referendum piece, and that may upset some of you, but I think, you know, true leadership at times is taking a nuanced position that is hated by both sides. So, following this vote, I believe that myself, Councilmember Bender and Councilmember Worszami will have a staff direction that will put into place a mechanism to take the reins and do this the right way. And I'm very confident that we are going to move in the right direction here in the next year. And then finally, regarding the law, you know, this is the case with most law. There are ambiguities, there are gray areas, and I fully appreciate the leverage that is brought by the threat of a lawsuit. And I fully appreciate that. And, you know, I've read, and I have read the law on this, and ultimately, I will not be supporting this legislation via referendum.
Councilmember Kano. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the time to address the community on this very important issue. I naturally, intuitively, and because I was born into the community that is facing the struggle today, will be supporting the charter, the question to move forward on the ballot. So I will not be able to support your motion today, Councilmember Glidden, and I wanted to talk a little bit about my position on this issue. I come from a community where participatory democracy has proven to strengthen nations, countries, and the standard of living of many people. I come from communities that struggle to pay their bills daily. Today, you know, we see how our community members have been able to mobilize more than 17,000 signatures in support of raising the wage through a measure that directly engages the people of the city to say whether or not they would like their lives to be improved. I believe this is the right thing to do. I believe we need to support our community members to have a say in this particular issue. I am not afraid of a legal lawsuit. I think that it is important for us to have this conversation and to move forward in the process and to not block our residents from having a say in this particular question to raise the wage. It's clear that federally, the minimum wage has not been raised since 2009. Locally, the Minnesota minimum wage is below the federal poverty level for a family of I want to repeat that again because I think that's really important for us to notice, is that the current Minnesota minimum wage, even at its heightened level, is still below the federal poverty level. I want to know how many councilmembers can make a living and can feed their children and send them prepared to school on that wage. More than one in four Minneapolis residents today live in poverty. Those issues are connected to the challenges we see in our communities in crime and safety and the shootings. These two issues are interrelated, and this is a clear solution for that, for those particular challenges. The Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development recently came out with statistics talking about how an individual, in order to afford basic needs in our city and our region, needs to be making $15.28. The facts are there. The issue is real. What you as a community have done is raised, in a very important debate, an issue that, to me, is not necessarily radical, but it's needed, it's visionary, and it's not going away. As a woman with three children, coming from a household of a mother who also had three children, I recognize that right now, 27% of the women living in Minneapolis are living in poverty. How dare we not let those women vote on whether or not they want to raise the wage? I believe this is an appropriate question and an appropriate charter amendment issue. I believe it's morally and ethically the right thing to do. I come from a community where, when we started mobilizing for immigrant rights, we learned about the civil rights of this country, and we learned about how, back in the day, the legal opinion was to ensure that African-American people and white people could not share the same drinking fountain. The community mobilized and changed that. I come from a community where the legal opinion of the day was undocumented immigrant students should not attend college at in-state tuition rates. The community mobilized and changed that. Today, the legal opinion says, no, you shouldn't allow this ballot question to move forward. Elected officials need to stand up and say, yes, it is time for us to address this issue. So today, I will be voting against the motion to not allow the Minneapolis voters to have this on the ballot, and I will be standing with you long-term to figure out ways that we can raise the wage. And I know that other councilmembers here today will be put in a difficult situation in their votes, and I want to say that I appreciate their willingness to continue to walk with us in this conversation. I acknowledge that we will not achieve a consensus today. Perhaps consensus sometimes is not good. But I do want to say that I appreciate all the work that the community has done to bring this forward to our attention, to continue to advance the issue of economic justice, and that I will be voting with you today.
So we have some other councilmembers in queue. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a little hesitant to try to speak to this room today, and I would ask that you please listen, as I have listened to so many of you, so as a request I have. I want to speak to my constituents in particular. I have had such a huge number of comments and conversations and emails and phone calls about this issue. I was one of the earliest supporters, along with many of my colleagues, of raising the wage in the city of Minneapolis, and I stand here very strongly in support of raising the wage in the city of Minneapolis. This is a hard vote for me today. To be honest, I could take an easy vote because I think, you know, as people talk, as we vote, you'll see that my vote won't tip the scales in one way or another for the result today. So I could take what would seem like a politically easy vote, to stand with workers, to put this on the ballot, and I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to do that for the same reason that I have taken so many hard votes in the past. Thank you. I support raising the wage. I know that many people in this room disagree with me, will be angry with me, and I invite you to call me, I invite you to sit with me and talk about this. I think you are going to see, by the time this meeting is over, that the majority of city council members in the city of Minneapolis either support or are open to raising the wage, and I think that is really important message for us to send today. I also understand, and I have absolutely no critique of the ballot campaign. I understand that workers want wages now. I understand that the feeling of by any means necessary, I have no...
Can we just let her be able to finish her comments?
Thank you, everyone. I am in awe of the organizing that has happened. I think that the signatures and the emails and the calls show how strongly people in the city of Minneapolis feel about wages. I ask you to please work with us as we move forward to pass a higher minimum wage in the city of Minneapolis.
Councilmember Worszami.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm going to support your motion today. I know it's going to be very difficult for the community and organizers, and I appreciate all the hard work you've done, but we are, we do support the majority of the council, including Council Vice President Glidden, who's worked on this for a long time, who's a champion of this issue, and Councilmember Bender, and Councilmember Frye, and Gordon and Kano. We've, you know, we are, it's all about how we get there, and is it a referendum or an ordinance? Do we include all the voices, or do we just say $15 right now? You know, or do we include the small businesses? I have a concern. I have a concern because I come from a community, I come from a community that drives small business. I come from a community that drives small business. You know, Quirah Lo Restaurant, Marsha Allah Restaurant, the money transfers, Amel, the Hafshil, the home health cares, the daycare's, thousands of colored people work for small businesses. You know, Lake Street, the Latino businesses who've come to my office, who are concerned, who are saying, our voice has not been heard. You know, we're small businesses. I employ 10 people, I employ 15 people. You've just passed a sick and safe time ordinance that we are not even aware of, that we don't even know how to comply to. Now you're going to increase the minimum wage without us being at the table. Now, I'm very supportive of increasing the minimum wage. I grew up in a country that had social welfare, you know, safety nets, the NHS, you know, full healthcare benefits, you know, things that we talk about here in the United States I had growing up in Europe. So I'm very supportive of it, but how do we get there is a different story. How do we get there? And I am going to support our attorney's recommendation, but please give us an opportunity to work with you, to work with everyone, to craft an ordinance. Like I said, you have supporters on the council. We will move forward together. We will work, just like we did on Sick Pay. You were saying we weren't going to pass it, but we did, and it was actually stronger than people expected, and I believe that we can get something on minimum wage that will benefit workers, that will protect small minority and black-owned businesses in the city of Minneapolis. Because if we're talking about wealth, it's not just about earning $15 minimum wage. It's about developing and training our youth, making sure that they have the skills to earn double minimum wage, double $15 an hour. And, hold on, let me finish. And also protecting, and also protecting small businesses that are immigrant-owned and minority-owned, they also need to be taken into consideration. And that's the challenge that I have, and we will move forward, but we will also include their voices in this discussion. So, thank you very much, and thank you to Councilmember Vice President Glidden.
So there's one more speaker in queue. There's one more speaker in queue. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak about this. I just wanted to explain a little bit about my reasoning and why I can't support your motion coming forward. It was kind of interesting because the clerk was so good and the attorney asked to provide We were provided two optional resolutions, and as I read through one, that said we should put it on the ballot, it made complete sense to me. I think a key provision that we needed to look for is, is it sufficient in satisfying the minimum signature requirements and in compliance with requirements as to the form under Minnesota Statute, Section 410? And I think that's really what this decision hinges on. I have to say, I enter it with a lot of bias, a lot of bias about the economic disparities in our city, in our country, in our world, a lot of bias of raising questions about capitalism itself, things like that. But this is really about... But this is really about, did the petition, did, did the petition satisfy the minimum requirements and does comply with Statute 410.12? So, before I got anybody's opinion on this, I looked up 410.12, and it was pretty clear to me that it's a, it's a fairly broad statute that gives a lot of authority for charter amendments and things to go into, into charters that are there. So it was interesting to read the other opinions as they came in, and I think they, the discussion about, this is just an ordinance, is kind of a distraction, because nobody's asking for an ordinance, this is about a charter amendment. So that's what we have to, it, we're, nobody wants this as an ordinance. I'll tell you my personal opinion and to my colleagues here, I think this is better suited for an ordinance. And I've been here a long time, and I've seen us look at ordinance and charter changes, and what should go in there, and what shouldn't. And I thought rules about loaves of bread really didn't belong in the charter. I questioned why we're having charter provisions about swimming and other issues, and I supported it when we decided to take those out of the charter. And the way we decided to take those provisions out of the charter and move them into ordinances, we went to the voters and said, please, please make these changes, voters, in our charter. And nobody had said those, that minutia, and even the food, you guys must remember this, that we had a liquor food, money requirement in order to have a liquor license in certain parts of the city, and all those things. So obviously, we'd been allowed for, over a century, can't remember when the first charter was, was, was passed, but definitely over a century, to have those provisions in the charter. So that is kind of a call, what goes in there. And what goes in there, a lot of it has to do with, how much do we want it baked into the government? Do we want to make, changing it very hard, or do we want it to be more flexible and easier? And I actually think an ordinance might make a lot more sense for this, it'll be more flexible, it would be easier, we could pass it with seven votes, we could amend it with seven votes, and those kinds of things. And after this goes down here, and we watch what happens with the lawsuit and other actions goes forward, I am an absolute partner in crafting an ordinance, using this as a draft model that we can go forward on. So don't get me wrong. I also just want to say that I think people are entering this with the best of intentions, and they're trying really hard to figure out how to do the right thing, whether they're the lawyers from the outside, our attorneys in here, the people in this room, all of us, and, and nothing is really personal here. But when I look at who gets to decide on what an ordinance, whether it's an ordinance or not, or whether it feels or looks more like an ordinance or doesn't, I don't know that that's the council's role here. We need to make sure that it legally could be put in the charter, and I believe it can, and we also need to be able to make sure it had the kind of signatures to go on there. And then I think what's appropriate for us to do is say, let's have the debate with the voters about whether this should be in the charter or not, and let the voters of the city decide. And if I was part of that, I'd say it absolutely could go in the charter. When I read, we talk about what should go in the charter, and it's things that relate to the Establishment Administration or Regulation of City Government. Well, obviously, what we're doing here is we're adding another regulation to our city government. It also talks about, well, the, the conclusion of the attorney that we got talked about how this is legislative in nature. So I was curious about, what do we consider legislative documents in, in city government? So I Googled it, I Googled other cities and everything, and when I look up legislative documents, the first one for almost every city that has one is a charter. So we're talking about a legislative thing, obviously, it's our charter. And then, there's another concern, and setting a minimum wage for all individuals in the city is establishing a detailed, and establishing a detailed scheme of enforcement doesn't necessarily fit under 410. But 410 actually, interestingly enough, and somewhat to my relief, as somebody who wanted to see this might fit into the charter, calls out that we can put any scheme of municipal government in, in the charter. And it even uses the word scheme, and I thought that was, it also uses, I think, framework of governance, and it talks about that. And so I was curious about what is a scheme, and how do we define it? I actually looked it up, and a scheme is a large-scale systematic plan or arrangement for, this is, I'm not sure which dictionary this is, you can find your own, this might be Merin Webster, but a large-scale systematic plan or arrangement for attaining one particular object or putting a particular idea into effect. But when I looked at the ballot proposal, the charter amendment, this is a large-scale systematic plan for setting a minimum wage in the city of Minneapolis and putting that idea into effect. And that's what, we have a lot of those in our charter. And now, some of us in good governments would like our charter to be more about the framework and talk about the powers and all of that, but this also is, we're adding a new power to the city council to set a minimum wage, and it would be important. So, I couldn't, I can't wrap my head around the idea that this isn't an appropriate thing to put on the ballot, because it fits 410... Also, I, ask my brother. Just kidding. I mean, my brother in the big sense. Also, though, it's tough, because we have such differing legal opinions that are coming at us right now, that it might not even be, it might be overstepping the role, I mean, we often talk about, we have legislative decisions, quasi-judicial decisions, judicial decisions, and we're kind of acting like a judge in this matter. But quite seriously, whatever happens today, potentially, if we, if we put this, if we voted to allow it on, on the charter, or we didn't, there'd probably be some legal action about it. And I'm just more comfortable saying, all right, I've tried to interpret it the best that I can, I see that 410 says we can put schemes of, of, of governance into our charter, this is obviously a scheme, it has the sufficient number of signatures, my job right now is to err on the side of fairness and democracy and say, put it out there. Then if it's meant to, it can go forward to a judge, where we can have the attorney spend hours and hours, you know, putting in their briefs and having testimony, and it can go to another level if it seems like it needs to be that formal review. So thanks for giving me this much time. I have a couple more notes, but I think I'll let it go there.
Councilmember Andrew Johnson has asked to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think one of the things, I have the luxury of, up here, is seeing the staff direction that I know some colleagues will be putting forward after this vote, and I would ask that folks stick around and actually hear about that staff direction, I think it's pretty powerful, and I don't want to let the cat out of the bag on that, but I think, as was mentioned, it's very supportive of increasing the minimum wage. When it comes to this issue, it's not an easy issue. I personally would prefer to actually see this on the ballot, I think, for a number of reasons, including the fact that I think, when you look at the state legislature, the state legislature is, to me, less likely to preempt any sort of action by the council or by the citizens versus the council. So I'm torn on this issue, and obviously, I'm not a lawyer, but I had an opportunity to go over both sides very, very closely on this. What strikes me is around what is actually within the charter. And if you look at that document, it is about the structure and the organization of the city. You can go out and look at the League of Minnesota Cities, what their best practices are for charters, and it is about how the city as an enterprise, as an organization, functions. And to me, the issue of minimum wage isn't, is a business regulation, it is ordinance, it is something that the council needs to work on. And so that is why today I will be voting to support the motion, and, and I want to, and I want to remind everybody here, and I want to remind everyone here, that if you think that your time organizing was wasted because this is, the motion is going to pass today, you are profoundly mistaken, because this staff direction would not have happened if not for all this work. And, and I also feel that if I were to vote yes today, well, I would, I'm sure, get applause and pats on the back, and it would be politically easy to vote yes today, I would be voting, I believe, voting to waste the time and the money of this organization...
Let him, let him finish, please.
...in a futile court fight, because it would not stand up under reasonable interpretation. And so if anybody has doubts about that, I would ask you to go personally look at our city charter, and go look at documents out there on what a city charter is, how it is framed, and then make your decision off of that. But I've looked at it, and that is my decision today, and I will support this staff direction as well, and I hope you all take the time to read it and understand that this is the moment that minimum wage is being teed up in this city per ordinance.
I'm not, okay, thank you. I'm not seeing anyone else who has asked to speak, I'm just looking because, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to respond to the narrative of, of this vote being politically easy. I don't think this is politically easy for anybody. And I think it's really important to acknowledge that we are all making our decisions based on our assessment of reading the legal opinions that have been put out from both the advocate groups, the groups who want to raise the wage, from our own city attorney. It is not politically easy to, to vote against your own city attorney. It is not politically easy to always be in the minority on this council. It is not politically easy to have city pages write racist articles about you, because you're not willing to back down on issues of racial equity. I know it's not politically easy for you, who wants, you want to see a raise in the wage, and you're going to have to take a stance against the thousands of people who want to see this on the charter. I just, I don't find that frame constructive, I don't find that frame to really identify the issues that we're working on here. I, I just want to make sure that people don't frame this as, oh, you're just trying to be popular and voting with the community. I am here to vote for what I believe is right, for what my residents voted me to stand up So I just want to acknowledge that this is complex for everybody here. I want to acknowledge that everyone has a constituency to report to, and the voters will, will hold us accountable for these votes long-term. And I don't want to minimize this into a popularity contest, this is, that's not what this is about. This is about addressing some of the deepest wealth inequities and racial inequities in And, and I don't, I don't want us as policymakers to walk away from this vote, thinking that that's what this was about, a popularity contest. This, for me, is a way to directly help the women, children, and people of color in this community, in the most direct way, in the most direct way. And as I alluded to my, in my speech earlier, this is where we, as policymakers, differentiate ourselves from lawyers. We respond to the people, not to the policies that might be outdated in our law books.
Okay, and I just want to double-check, because I apologize, I didn't see Councilmember Kano before. Anyone else who wanted to speak? I'm not seeing anyone else who has asked to speak, so I think the clerk will call the roll on this, on the motion that I made.
Councilmember Gordon.
No.
Councilmember Kano.
No.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Andrew Johnson.
Aye.
Cherrick Glidden.
Aye.
There are ten ayes and two nays.
Thank you. So I'm going to call on Councilmember Frye, I'm going to call on Councilmember Frye, who has a staff direction he would like to make.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. This is a staff direction brought by myself, Councilmember Worsami, and Councilmember Bender, and I'll just read it through. Councilmembers Frye, Worsami, and Bender direct the Office of the City Coordinator to: Work with stakeholders, review policies from other cities, review and incorporate results from the forthcoming minimum wage study, and recommend a minimum wage policy to bring before the City Council Committee of the Whole by the second quarter of 2017. And two, to formulate a plan for engagement to bring before the City Council Committee of the Whole on or before October 5th, 2016.
Okay. So Councilmember Frye, did you want to speak to that, or there are other speakers in queue? Okay, all right, so get in queue whenever you would like. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say that I'm, I'm glad that Councilmembers Frye and Worsami and I could come together today with some pretty quick turnaround to bring this forward. I understand that this isn't something that is agreed upon by some of the folks who worked on the ballot, and I absolutely understand that, I understand that. As an author of the paid sick leave policy that passed unanimously last year, as an author of the fair scheduling ordinance that was returned to author with only Councilmembers Glidden, Gordon, and I standing in support of fair scheduling last year, my commitment to this is real. And I hope that after we, today, we can find a way to all work together to raise the wage in the city of Minneapolis. This is a real commitment from me. I am stepping up to say that I am willing to lead, as I did on paid sick time, to help pass a minimum wage next year in the city of Minneapolis.
There are some more, there are some more speakers in, there are some more speakers in queue. Councilmember Kano.
Madam... Madam Chair, I would like to make an amendment to this staff directive that has been presented to us. So I passed around earlier a, an amended version of the Frye, Worsami, Bender staff direction. So the, the new version would read, work with stakeholders, review policies from other cities, review and incorporate results from the forthcoming minimum wage study, and recommend a minimum wage policy, and this is the addition, prioritizing achieving a fifteen-dollar-per-hour minimum wage for businesses above five hundred employees by the year 2020, to bring before the City Council Committee of the Whole by, and this is the second change, February 1st, 2017. And then the second point in their staff direction would stay the same, which reads, formulate a plan for engagement to bring before the City Council Committee of the Whole on or before October 5th, 2016.
And, okay, so Councilmember Kano has made that amendment, I'm not seeing any other speakers on the amendment, so on approval, please say aye. Opposed? No. I'm not sure I heard that, so. Can we please do roll call on that? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Andrew Johnson.
Aye.
Yang.
No.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
No.
Goodman is absent. Frye.
No.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
No.
Cherrick Glidden.
Aye.
There are six ayes and six nays.
All right, so we move back to, for now, to the original, so I'm, I'm going to ask the, either the clerk or the city attorney to explain what happened. So Councilmember Kano made the motion, and why don't you go ahead and explain that?
So the motion that was made to amend, the main motion brought forward by Councilmember Kano, was taken by a roll call vote, the roll resulted in six ayes and six nays. That's a tie vote, and in the absence of a definitive majority vote, a tie vote falls to the floor, we're back to the original main motion.
We're back to the original main motion.[594.25][594.25](laughter)
So you're not serious about raising the wage? After your election, under your door.
So... So we go back to the speaker list on the original motion. Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilman President Liddon. You know, I'm very supportive of the motion, and I'm one of the authors with Councilmember Frye and Bender.[626.41][626.41](audience laughing) No.
So...
I think people are, if I may, if I may speak, I think people are misunderstanding something. What we voted on right now was an amendment to the motion. It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't, it was an amendment that was just made. We, I haven't read it as an author of the original. Not what I mean.[655.63][655.63](audience laughing)
Okay, so let Councilmember Worsami speak.
You know, I also enjoy political theater, but let me, let me finish this. What we have here, what we have here is a motion that I support and the authors support. There was an amendment to the motion that changed specific dates and changed, added certain things. The original motion, the reason why I'm supporting the original motion that we crafted together, and I'm not supporting the new motion, is it allows us...
So I'm asking for just permission to allow him to finish his statement, so...
The motion that we have in front of us allows us to have a clear discussion, to bring in all parties, including, you know, the community that's organizing the 15 now, also bringing the other voices, coming together, and crafting an ordinance the same way as we did with the sick and safe time.[711.69][711.69](audience laughing)
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
That's why, that's why I'm, that's why I'm supporting this motion, and I did not support the previous amendment. Now, now, if we're talking about, again, again, we are try, I mean, it's all about the process. I believe this process, I believe bringing people together, bringing the small businesses, bringing the activists together, and crafting an ordinance will support, will support, will support.
Yes. Please.
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
And I'm from the poorest community in the state, ma'am. So let's not, let's not, let's not, let's not, let's not have back and forth. Like I said, I support this motion, and I would like my colleagues to support it.
Ma'am, and other speakers, can we please let, I do understand that emotions are high in the room, but I just want to allow the speakers to, on the council, to be able to give their reasoning, which is their transparency to the public on their statement and...
And I would like to finish by saying, I would respect, I would like my colleagues to support this motion that we brought forth. It gives us an opportunity to raise the minimum wage, and it also gives us an opportunity to hear other voices that are not here right now. Just like the activists here are saying that they want to hear their voices heard, there are countless thousands of people in the city of Minneapolis who have not, who have not participated in the process, who also deserve their voices to be heard. And I think, I think, I think we should accord them, I think we should accord them the same respect that we want for ourselves. And that's all this motion does.
People are proud.[817.13][817.13](laughter)
Yeah. Thank you very much.
So we have, we have two other council members who have asked to speak. Councilmember Gordon.
So I, I don't know how I can't vote against the staff direction because obviously it's moving the ball, you know, if football metaphor works, whatever. It's a, it's a tiny step forward. I appreciate that. I'm concerned about the timing of this. This is the exact kind of staff direction I might expect would have come forward with, when the report comes in in September, or maybe when we're doing a, when we refer a subject matter introduction to a committee, then they'll direct staff to work on it. So this seems like it's premature. I think what it can do, and obviously what it's intended to do, is to show the public that, well, we, we don't, we want to try to do something, and we couldn't obviously cobble together the votes to let the charter amendment make it onto the ballot, but we think we can get the votes to at least say that staff's going to legitimately take this up and start studying it more seriously. It's a very good possibility, and this is all about inside strategy, that if we didn't do it now, it might not have the votes, because now it just is a pinch point here from what's happened today, so I'm going to support it. But I couldn't support it without kind of shining that light on it and doing some of my old man grumbling about it as I vote yes.
Okay. Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things here for, for the community members and other council members who might be, might have listened to Councilmember Worsami's comments. I just want to say that the finalized version of the staff direction was shared with me this morning as I sat down in this chair at about 10:00 a.m., quickly assessed it, had been thinking about an amendment, and had I been given the final version of the staff direction two, three, four days ago, I could have talked to other folks about the changes that I was hoping to make to this. I quickly emailed everybody this morning and handed out copies at the beginning of the meeting on the changes that I would propose. And so just to be clear, what was voted on what I would consider a tie, a six to six tie, and thank you to all the council members who did vote in support of this amendment, was being clear and intentional about reaching a $15 per hour minimum wage for businesses For businesses above 500 employees by the year 2020, which is the language that was presented to us in the charter amendment that the community is here to support today. So this does not drastically change anything in the staff direction outside of being more clear and intentional about how we're hoping to raise the wage. And this particular language reflects a national trend where more than 30 cities have already raised their wage nationally above the federal minimum wage, and more than 12 cities have already raised the wage at $15 an hour nationally. So I just wanted to clarify for the public what was happening, and specifically because I take it a little personal when somebody says that, you know, they haven't been able to read something, because that's what happens to me all the time. People throw things at me at the last minute, hoping that they'll be able to pass their issues through. And, and what I did was respond to something that was presented to me at 10:00 a.m. this morning with the best intention to continue to raise the wage and ensure that council members could take a stand to support the working families of this community. So again, thank you to the six council members who voted in support. I will not be able to support the original staff direction as presented.[1056.25][1056.25](applause)
Councilmember Palmasano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted a couple minutes to explain my votes in the vote that I'm about to take. I supported Councilmember Kano's amendment to this motion because I do believe that's more consistent with the way other cities have started by looking at 500 employees and above. And I appreciate that there is urgency around addressing income inequality. And yes, every hardworking employee deserves a living wage. We don't have this research yet, so to me, going forward with this kind of a staff direction saying, give us the research back and then give us, you know, a policy to move forward with it, is really preemptive. We don't know if that research is going to come back and say that we need to have a bigger, we need to get more people with us, more of a county size, or more of two cities with us to start down this path. I, I hear the call for a higher minimum wage, and I believe the gentleman who spoke about our city not being able to make this $15 an hour for our own employees is a very real thing. More than one in four people in Minneapolis live in poverty. I appreciate that Councilmember Kano said that. And, and you need more money, and you also need the cost of living to stay the same. There's a lot of externalities here. That's why I will work hard with you on things we can do to start this in a way that's balanced, on a path where small businesses can still offer employment, where hours aren't going to get cut, and where young people can still learn job skills. I'm interested in starting down this path. Last year, Hennepin County took on $15 an hour minimum wage for all the county employees. We haven't yet done that, so maybe we need to look at what that would take to start it here and with ourselves. It might be because it would greatly diminish some of our programs, like Step Up, for one. There are a lot of Minneapolis small businesses that do that kind of thing today, too, for us. I've asked our Director of Economic Policy and Development several months ago, when Shakopee started down that path, of saying that any time there is a government incentive to locate their business there in Shakopee, that they need to pay those employees higher than the minimum wage, and that has worked out very well for the economics of Shakopee. Those have had great results, and I don't know why we're not looking at that kind of thing here. So I can't support the staff direction as written today because I feel it's preemptive, but I do commit to continue working on it. Thank you.
I believe Councilmember Johnson had raised his red tag, and then Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that, just to respond to what was said about that, I think that we do have space right now to have staff review policies from other cities, review it, and as the results are coming in on the minimum wage study, to be able to review that, incorporate that, and to start working on the actual outreach and engagement of all the different stakeholders on this issue. So this is a staff direction that I can support. Well, just recall that I know with paid sick leave, something I'd supported from the very start, there were a lot of people that looked at the partnership that was created and said, oh, this is just a reason or a way to kill this issue of paid sick leave. They're very upset about that. And at the time, had paid sick leave come up for a vote, it would have failed, and then we'd have closed the door on it. Instead, we created a partnership, we created a process around it, we brought stakeholders together, and it passed unanimously. Not only did it pass unanimously and benefit Minneapolis workers, it heated up for cities across the state to work on this issue. And now we have St. Paul working on it. I believe there are initiatives in Duluth, in Bloomington. I believe there are folks interested in St. Louis Park and in cities across our state. And I think one of the reasons why they're looking at it is because it passed unanimously, because we were able to do it here in Minneapolis. And one of the things that I've learned in my time at city councils is that you have to have process here in order to get things done and be able to bring stakeholders together, and that is exactly what this is doing. So I'm not surprised if some folks are skeptical, but I'd remind you that there's been skepticism in the past around this and look at the results that we've been able to produce in our short time as new council members when it comes to these kind of issues. So I am supportive of this staff direction, and I appreciate my colleagues bringing it forward. And I also just wanted to speak specifically to staff on this as well. I do expect that this staff direction will pass. I understand that that is the city council prioritizing this work. I understand that that may mean that there's a lot of stress and a lot of effort involved in that, and so I understand that other priorities or other work you are doing, that the timelines may be affected by that. And so I would urge you to remind me and my colleagues of that, that when you're working on this, that we understand that we have made this a priority, and this is something that is ultimately going to bump some of our other work or postpone it or delay it. And I appreciate staff for all of their future work on this and look forward to working with you.
Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam Chair. About two years ago, I expressed support for an increased minimum wage and explicitly said that we could do so at the city level. And, you know, I am also very supportive of the content of Councilmember Kano's amendment. But I do think that we need to go through the process to do this right. And that's why I'm sticking with the underlying amendment. There's clear majority that believes that we need to go in this direction, I think. And I feel very confident that we will be able to enact a minimum wage policy at the city level next year.
Councilmember Kano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Procedurally, somebody could make a motion to include some of the portions of the amendment that I put forward if folks want to reconsider some of their positions here. I think it's important to acknowledge that the nonprofit groups, the advocates, and the coalition that has come together to work on these issues really wants more time to be able to work on this staff direction with our policymakers, and I think that partnership is important, and I think we should consider honoring that. I don't think it means that people don't want to take this initiative forward, that people wouldn't support the staff direction later. I think that if we are able to put this on hold and work out some of the details to make it stronger for both the community and our council colleagues, that would make sense, including, you know, some of the comments that Councilmember Linnea Palmasano made today. I think it does make sense to try to figure out how we can make this a little bit stronger and acknowledge also Councilmember Cam Gordon's notes about the timing of this and when this could be introduced so that it's, that it's aligned better with the current work that the council is doing to look at raising the wage, both through our study and through the mechanisms that the staff is putting together to release that study into the public. So I just wanted to make a note that, you know, that's still on the table, that somebody could choose to change this language a little bit and try to get it amended, including any, any of the leading authors of the staff direction, to send a stronger message to the community that we're serious about raising the wage, specifically...[1552.23][1552.23](applause) Specifically around, you know, some of the businesses that are above 500 employees, which we know is already something the charter language and the community agrees with and is in line with the national trends we're seeing, and is also something that I think most policymakers understand to be very feasible and realistic. I do appreciate that the staff direction, you know, as it's written, doesn't include anything about, you know, negatively impacting some of the relationships we have, because there is some community engagement language in there, and that's, that's excellent. I do want to acknowledge that the small business community is very present in my mind, and of course, the small business owners on East Lake Street, who I work with regularly every day, many of them Latino, many of them Somali, much like Councilmember Worsami's word. And so that's why the specific language that I suggested on the amendment was focusing on the businesses that were above 500 employees. So I want to make sure that that doesn't get lost in the conversation. So with that, you know, I would be happy to reconsider some language that is, that has changed in the original staff direction, but because of issues of timing and lack of clarity, I think that I'm just not going to be able to vote on the original staff direction as it was presented at 10:00 a.m. this morning.
Yeah, I'd like to move...
Councilmember Gordon is asked to speak.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I move to table. I think we can take this up with the next committee of the whole.[1664.13][1664.13](applause)
It's essentially a motion to postpone. Did you want to speak?
Yeah, just briefly, if I, if I could. I think obviously Councilmember Frye has indicated some interest in adding maybe 15th more specifically. There's lots of details to be worked out. I didn't, I didn't see the staff direction until after the meeting had started. So I think it would be, it would be nice, and we have a good shot at getting, I think, a unanimous vote at the next committee of the whole. Obviously, we've presented this now, today. Everybody understands we take it seriously, and we're going to work together on it, even if we table it just till the next committee meeting, and then we can come back with a really clear staff direction, hopefully with unanimous support from all council members.
Okay.[1714.61][1714.61](audience cheering) So... So Councilmember Gordon has made a motion to postpone, and Council President Johnson is in the priority motion line, so I'm going to call on her.
Madam Chair, I would move to call the question.
So that is calling the question on the motion to postpone. I'm sorry. No, I'm under... So how does that work, then? I think we have to vote on the motion to postpone first and then, okay. So we have a motion from Councilmember Gordon. All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Nay? I believe the roll call. All right.
Postpone, postpone, right?
Okay. This is on Councilmember Gordon's motion to postpone. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Nay.
Bender?
No.
Andrew Johnson?
No.
Yang?
Aye.
Quincy?
Nay.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman is absent. Frye?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
President Johnson?
No.
Cherrick Liddon?
No.
There are 6 ayes and 6 nays.[1797.51][1797.51](audience cheering) There are six ayes and six nays.
All right. So Councilmember Gordon has made a motion to postpone, and Council President Johnson is in the priority motion line, so I'm going to call on her.
Madam Chair, I would move to call the question.
So that is calling the question on the motion to postpone. So how does that work, then? I think we have to vote on the motion to postpone first and then, okay. So we have a motion from Councilmember Gordon. All in approval, please say aye. All opposed? Nay. I believe the roll call. All right. This is on Councilmember Gordon's motion to postpone. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Nay.
Bender?
No.
Andrew Johnson?
No.
Yang?
Aye.
Quincy?
Nay.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman is absent.
Frye? Aye.
Palmisano?
Aye.
President Johnson?
No.
Chair Glidden?
No.
There are six ayes and six nays.
All right. So Councilmember Gordon has made a motion to postpone, and Council President Johnson is in the priority motion line, so I'm going to call on her.
Madam Chair, I would move to call the question.
So that is calling the question on the motion to postpone. So how does that work, then? I think we have to vote on the motion to postpone first and then, okay. So we have a motion from Councilmember Gordon. All in approval, please say aye. All opposed? Nay. I believe the roll call. All right. This is on Councilmember Gordon's motion to postpone. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Nay.
Bender?
No.
Andrew Johnson?
No.
Yang?
Aye.
Quincy?
Nay.
Worsami?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmisano?
No.
President Johnson?
Aye.
Chair Glidden?
Aye.
There are nine ayes and three nays.
Thank you. So I believe with that, we have concluded with the business that relates to the I'll have another important item before us, which is the petition campaign waiting very patiently. We're going to have just a, and hopefully this might be a little briefer, Mr. Carl, overview of what's before us with this, with this item, and then we have an opportunity for the petition campaign to present their views, and I believe they also have a PowerPoint, and we want to help, make sure we're helping them with that.
Madam Vice President, the second petition pending before this body today is submitted by the Committee for Professional Policing through its chair, Dave Bickin, who is present today. The petition seeks to amend the city charter to require that Minneapolis police officers carry professional liability insurance throughout their terms of service, which, if approved by voters, would become effective one year after its passage. The petition was submitted to the Charter Commission on June 13th and transferred to the city the next business day by filing with the Office of City Clerk. The first review of that petition found it to be insufficient in meeting minimum statutory requirements. An amended petition was subsequently filed on July 5, which was found to be sufficient and in compliance with statutory requirements on July 11. At its regular meeting on July 22, the city council referred the subject matter of this petition to this committee for its review, evaluation, and formal recommendation for action by the full city council, consistent with the procedural rules of the city council and subject to the provisions of Minnesota Statutes Section 40.12 subdivision 4. As I have already indicated in the prior petition, the city council has a ministerial duty that's provided by state law for the handling of citizen petitions to amend home rule charters. Specifically, petitions that are deemed valid must be referred to the governing body of the municipality, that is, the city council, so that it may fix the form of the ballot question. That's the statutory language. What it means is that it is the duty of the council to determine the language used in submitting the ballot question to the electorate. The statute requires the wording of the ballot to be sufficiently to identify clearly in distinguishing it from every other question on the ballot. We've discussed the form that is required by statute. As directed by city council, the city attorney did draft proposed ballot language, copies of which were posted to the city's website on Thursday, July 28. Copies of that ballot question are included in your briefing materials. They also were made available to the public for this meeting. The draft ballot language prepared by your city attorney complies with the statutory formatting requirement. As with the first petition, the city attorney requested that I provide her draft ballot language to the petitioner, which I did via email to the committee chair on Thursday, July 28. As of this morning, I have not received any response from the committee about the draft ballot language prepared by the city attorney.
And I will just let you know that, I'll make sure, they did communicate with me, and I have received some comment, and I also shared that with the city attorney. So I just want to make sure we know that we did get that, and we appreciate the feedback.
For the sake of the viewing audience and those in the chamber who may have, who may not have a printed copy of the revised ballot language that's been proposed, I'd like to read that text. The question is, shall the Minneapolis City Charter be amended effective November 8, 2017, to require all Minneapolis police officers to purchase and maintain continuous coverage under individual professional liability insurance policies? Such policies to be the primary insurance for the officers and to include coverage for willful or malicious acts and acts outside the scope of the officer's employment by the city, with the city having the option to reimburse officers for the base rate of coverage, but with police officers being responsible for any additional costs due to personal or claims history and prohibiting the city from indemnifying a police officer against liability in any amount greater than required by state statute unless the officer's insurance is exhausted. Pursuant to Minnesota statutes, the clerk must submit the ballot questions to the auditor no less than 74 days before the election. Again, as a reminder, that date is Friday, August 26, about three weeks away. I've also mentioned that the full text of the amendments must be published in both the Star Tribune and the Finance and Commerce Paper, which is our official newspaper of the city, for two successive weeks prior to being on the ballot. To be enacted, the ballot question requires that at least 51% of affirmative votes of all those voting on the question are tallied. If enacted, then the amendment would become legally effective and codified 30 days after the election unless a later effective date is provided. In that case, the amendment would be enacted by the voters. The requirement for police officers to carry professional liability insurance would become effective one year after the date of the election, which is November 8, 2017. Completes my review of the statutory procedures governing consideration of this proposed amendment. Again, it's the duty of the council to determine the form of the question by approving language to submit to the electorate. I've concluded my prepared remarks and am happy to stand for questions if the committee has any.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify one thing. I did communicate with this campaign, just as I did with the other campaign, to make sure that if they had feedback on the ballot question, they were submitting it. And it's my fault. I should have known that the city junk folder or spam filter sometimes is more aggressive than it should be, so I should have checked that. But we did communicate verbally, and for folks to know, and this is before the campaign takes its time to address us, they had identified that there is a word used, which is "purchase", the insurance. They had requested the word "maintain" be used instead of the word "purchase". I had communicated to our city attorney, Susan Siegel, that I knew that the campaign would like a different word than the word "purchase" and that they had referred to their original language presented when they were gathering signatures, which was the word "maintain". The city attorney has proposed the word "obtain" instead of "purchase", and so I think that's what I will move today, is replacing the word "purchase" with "obtain", but knowing we probably are going to want to have more conversation with the campaign about this word "obtain" versus "maintain". So I just want to say I'm open to that, but I think we might need to meet together after this meeting, if that's all right. So I think with that, I'm not seeing any questions. If the clerk could kind of clear out the question columns, that would be great from the council members. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Kano.
I'm on the, using the electronic management system here. I do have a quick question. Could the city attorney please speak to that recommendation to change from "purchase" to "obtain"? And did you say also "maintain" will be substituted with "obtain"?
I apologize. I just put something in my mouth. The campaign had, so the original language proposed by the city attorney used the word "purchase" in the title, and then it appears again in the actual language of what would appear on the ballot. The campaign identified that as a word they did not agree with, the word "purchase", and asked for the word "maintain" to be used. So it would read, "Proposal to amend the Minneapolis City Charter to require police officers to maintain liability insurance." The city attorney has proposed a little different word, which is the word "obtain", so it would, so for example, the title would read, "Proposal to amend the Minneapolis City Charter to require police officers to obtain liability insurance." I will just say, there hasn't been conversation between the city attorney and the petitioners directly on this, so I just want to acknowledge that.
So my question was, could the city attorney please explain why she recommends "obtain" versus "maintain"? And I understand "purchased" is not desired.
Madam Chair and Councilmember Kano, I'm actually, I think it's fine to take out the word "purchase", but I think you need some word because the proposed amendment says that they have to have proof of professional liability insurance coverage, which means they have to get it. So actually, what I'm recommending is the police officers to obtain and maintain continuous coverage, because both of those concepts, both of those concepts are in the proposal. They both have to have it. And then I know an important part of their proposal is the requirement that officers must maintain continuous coverage throughout their employment, creating a new condition of employment, as you, you know, if you will, that if they don't have it, presumably they
The underlying question of the Frye-Worsami Bender staff direction, all approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay. Yes, that's a courtesy. Clerk will call the roll on the staff direction vote.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
No.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Andrew Johnson.
Aye.
Yang.
No.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
No.
President Johnson.
Aye.
Cherrick Liddon.
Aye.
There are nine ayes and three nays.
Thank you. So I believe with that, we have concluded with the business that relates to the [inaudible]. We'll have another important item for us, which is the
[inaudible].
He is disturbing a government meeting. He needs to be removed. You have language about their leader.
All right, good. Okay, good. Good. So, thank you very much. We have another important item before us, and I appreciate those from that petition campaign waiting very patiently. We're going to have just a, and hopefully this might be a little briefer, Mr. Carl, overview of what's before us with this, with this item, and then we have an opportunity for the petition campaign to present their views, and I believe they also have a PowerPoint, and we want to help, make sure we're helping them with that.
Madam Vice President, the second petition pending before this body today is submitted by the Committee for Professional Policing through its chair, Dave Bickin, who is present today. The petition seeks to amend the city charter to require that Minneapolis police officers carry professional liability insurance throughout their terms of service, which, if approved by voters, would become effective one year after its passage. The petition was submitted to the Charter Commission on June 13th and transferred to the city the next business day by filing with the Office of City Clerk. The first review of that petition found it to be insufficient in meeting minimum statutory requirements. An amended petition was subsequently filed on July 5, which was found to be sufficient and in compliance with statutory requirements on July 11. At its regular meeting on July 22, the City Council referred the subject matter of this petition to this committee for its review, evaluation, and formal recommendation for action by the full City Council, consistent with the procedural rules of the City Council and subject to the provisions of Minnesota Statutes Section 410.12 subdivision 4. As I have already indicated in the prior petition, the City Council has a ministerial duty that's provided by state law for the handling of citizen petitions to amend home rule charters. Specifically, petitions that are deemed valid must be referred to the governing body of the municipality, that is, the City Council, so that it may fix the form of the ballot question. That's the statutory language. What it means is that it is the duty of the council to determine the language used in submitting the ballot question to the electorate. The statute requires the wording of the ballot to be sufficiently to identify clearly in distinguishing it from every other question on the ballot. We've discussed the form that is required by statute. As directed by City Council, the city attorney did draft proposed ballot language, copies of which were posted to the city's website on Thursday, July 28. Copies of that ballot question are included in your briefing materials. They also were made available to the public for this meeting. The draft ballot language prepared by your city attorney complies with the statutory formatting requirement. As with the first petition, the city attorney requested that I provide her draft ballot language to the petitioner, which I did via email to the committee chair on Thursday, July 28. As of this morning, I have not received any response from the committee about the draft ballot language prepared by the city attorney.
And I will just let you know that, I'll make sure they did communicate with, with, with me, and I have received some comment, and I also shared that with the city attorney. So I just want to make sure we know that we did get that, and we appreciate the feedback.
For the sake of the viewing audience and those in the chamber who may have, who may not have a printed copy of the revised ballot language that's been proposed, I'd like to read that text. The question is, shall the Minneapolis City Charter be amended effective November 8, 2017, to require all Minneapolis police officers to purchase and maintain continuous coverage under individual professional liability insurance policies? Such policies to be the primary insurance for the officers and to include coverage for willful or malicious acts and acts outside the scope of the officer's employment by the city, with the city having the option to reimburse officers for the base rate of coverage, but with police officers being responsible for any additional costs due to personal or claims history and prohibiting the city from indemnifying a police officer against liability in any amount greater than required by state statute unless the officer's insurance is exhausted. Pursuant to Minnesota statutes, the clerk must submit the ballot questions to the auditor no less than 74 days before the election. Again, as a reminder, that date is Friday, August 26, about three weeks away. I've also mentioned that the full text of the amendments must be published in both the Star Tribune and the Finance and Commerce Paper, which is our official newspaper of the city, for two successive weeks prior to being on the ballot. To be enacted, the ballot question requires that at least 51% of affirmative votes of all those voting on the question are tallied. If enacted, then the amendment would become legally effective and codified 30 days after the election unless a later effective date is provided. In that case, the amendment would be enacted by the voters. The requirement for police officers to carry professional liability insurance would become effective one year after the date of the election, which is November 8, 2017. Completes my review of the statutory procedures governing consideration of this proposed amendment. Again, it's the duty of the council to determine the form of the question by approving language to submit to the electorate. I've concluded my prepared remarks and am happy to stand for questions if the committee has any.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify one thing. I did communicate with this campaign, just as I did with the other campaign, to make sure that if they had feedback on the ballot question, they were submitting it. And it's my fault. I should have known that the city junk folder or spam filter sometimes is more aggressive than it should be, so I should have checked that. But we did communicate verbally, and for folks to know, and this is before the campaign takes its time to address us, they had identified that there is a word used, which is "purchase", the insurance. They had requested the word "maintain" be used instead of the word "purchase". I had communicated to our city attorney, Susan Siegel, that I knew that the campaign would like a different word than the word "purchase", and that they had referred to their original language presented when they were gathering signatures, which was the word "maintain". The city attorney has proposed the word "obtain" instead of "purchase", and so I think that's what I will move today, is replacing the word "purchase" with "obtain", but knowing we probably are going to want to have more conversation with the campaign about this word "obtain" versus "maintain". So I just want to say I'm open to that, but I think we might need to meet together after this meeting, if that's all right. So I think with that, I'm not seeing any questions. If the clerk could kind of clear out the question columns, that would be great, from the council members. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Kano.
I'm on the, using the electronic management system here. I do have a quick question. Could the city attorney please speak to that recommendation to change from "purchase" to "obtain"? And did you say also "maintain" will be substituted with "obtain"?
I apologize. I just put something in my mouth. The campaign had, so the original language proposed by the city attorney used the word "purchase" in the title, and then it appears again in the actual language of what would appear on the ballot. The campaign identified that as a word they did not agree with, and asked, the word "purchase", and asked for the word "maintain" to be used. So it would read, "Proposal to amend this Minneapolis City Charter to require police officers to maintain liability insurance." The city attorney has proposed a little different word, which is the word "obtain", so it would, so for example, the title would read, "Proposal to amend the Minneapolis City Charter to require police officers to obtain liability insurance." I will just say, I, there hasn't been conversation between the city attorney and the petitioners directly on this, so I just want to acknowledge that.
So my question was, could the city attorney please explain why she recommends "obtain" versus "maintain"? And I understand "purchased" is not desired.
Madam Chair and Councilmember Kano, I'm actually, I think it's fine to take out the word "purchase", but I think you need some word because the proposed amendment says that they have to have proof of professional liability insurance coverage, which means they have to get it. So actually, what I'm recommending is the police officers to obtain and maintain continuous coverage, because both of those concepts, both of those concepts are in the proposal. They both have to have it, and then I know an important part of their proposal is the requirement that officers must maintain continuous coverage throughout their employment, creating a new condition of employment, as you, you know, if you will, that if they don't have it, presumably they can't be employed, or if they lose it, that they will lose their employment. Okay. So I, I just want to, again, acknowledge that the petitioners haven't had an opportunity to have more conversation with the city attorney and the clerk about the difference between the "obtain" and "maintain", and whether we could have both words or whatever. And the purpose of their time, the 15 minutes, was more about responding to the legal argument about whether this is a proper subject for the ballot, if they would like to make some comments about that. I want to just offer you the flexibility, you know, we want to, we want you to have the time that you need to explain. We can also, you know, there will be time between now and Friday as well to have additional conversation. I just want to give you my commitment to having some further conversations, so. If you would like to, and do we need any assistance for the PowerPoint? No. Okay, I'm good. I wasn't sure.
Cherrick Liddon, Council President Johnson, and council members, my name is Michelle Gross, and I am a board member with the Committee for Professional Policing, and thank you so much for allowing us to present information on our police insurance amendment in preparation for your vote of placing, on placing our amendment on the ballot, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have at the end. Before we talk about the amendment, I want to talk about the current state. As it is now, the city is self-insured for police incidents. When a victim of police brutality or misconduct sues the city, the city decides case by case whether to indemnify, that means cover, the officer. While the city is not required to indemnify intentional acts, they almost always do, though they once in a while refuse. A recent example is the Blaine-Lainer case, in which Officer Lainer kicked a handcuffed Luis Garcia in the face. The city refused to indemnify him. While that's good for the taxpayers, it could have been harmful to Mr. Garcia's, it would have been much harder for him to get, to gain any measure of justice than to be compensated for his injuries through his lawsuit. However, even though the city wasn't going to indemnify Lainer, the City Council voted to pay out $360,000 of taxpayer money to Mr. Garcia. Because the city is self-insured, funds for lawsuit settlements and judgments come from the city's self-insurance fund, which is part of the general fund. In other words, taxpayer dollars. However, even when an officer engages in conduct that results in a large payout, there have historically been no consequences for that officer because the officer is almost never disciplined. Therefore, there have been no, there's no incentive for that officer to change the conduct that led to that lawsuit, and the people, the only people who have consequences are the taxpayers. The police insurance amendment will require police officers to carry professional liability insurance. The city could, and we believe they should, cover the base rate of this insurance, but any premium increases due to police misconduct settlements and judgments would be the responsibility of the officer who caused the increase. There are a number of benefits to this approach. An officer who engages in misconduct that results in a premium increase will have a personal consequence for that conduct. This incentivizes that officer not to engage in this behavior in the future, applying a risk management strategy to policing that is not currently present. It also removes the element of politics in terms of who is disciplined and who isn't. Officers who don't learn that lesson and who continue to engage in misconduct will find that their rates increase possibly to the point of being unaffordable, and in some cases, some officers may become uninsurable, and thus no longer able to be employed by the Minneapolis Police Department. As the worst offenders leave, good officers will have a much better working environment. And this is not insignificant because surveys have, staff surveys, staff engagement surveys in the city show that the police department has the lowest rates of staff engagement, so this is not insignificant. Taxpayers will experience a significant financial relief. Police leadership will have a powerful new tool for managing their staff. And finally, decreases in police misconduct will increase the safety of the community and improve police-community relations. For these reasons, we feel the police insurance amendment is a win for all. Taxpayers get relief, officers get guaranteed coverage, a benefit they don't now enjoy, and better policing is incentivized and the community is safer. Many occupations use professional liability insurance to drive out dangerous practitioners. FBI, CIA, and other federal agents carry professional liability insurance, and their agencies reimburse 50% of the cost. Other professionals such as doctors, nurses, lawyers, all of these folks, even plumbers and beauticians, all carry professional liability insurance. It's not a new concept. Our amendment is only novel because it applies these same risk management principles to policing. Police officers themselves are interested in having this coverage. In a March 17 article in Reuters, the Fraternal Order of Police, which is the largest police union in the country, reported that sales of their professional liability insurance have increased 15% in the last year, and this is with officers purchasing the insurance on their own and paying for it themselves. Is the police insurance amendment legal? We say yes. We took a year to carefully craft our language in consultation with attorneys, labor experts, insurance professionals, retired police officers, and many community stakeholders to ensure that our police insurance amendment is not only legal, but that it would be effective, and that it would not present additional barriers for people seeking justice after being harmed by police. The main state law that covers the issue of indemnification is Statute 466.07, as does the union contract, of course, speak to that issue. Under these statutes and provisions, the city is required to cover payouts resulting from lawsuits against police officers in cases where the police officer was acting within their role and duty. However, willful and malicious acts, acts outside the scope of the officer's employment, those kinds of things are specifically excluded. In these situations, police officers would be liable, and the city is under no obligation to defend the officers or pay damages resulting from legal actions, and, as we mentioned before, sometimes the city has chosen not to. By definition, misconduct falls outside the scope of employment. There is no moral, legal, or union contractual obligation that the city continue to pay out million, millions of dollars a year in bailouts for officers who engage in misconduct, and it may very well be misappropriation of tax dollars for the city to continue to do so. Through our research, we have found that policies available to federal agents and other policing agents that choose to purchase the insurance include coverage for intentional acts. Once adopted, our police insurance amendment will ensure that police officers are covered for acts of misconduct. Officers will have better coverage than they have now, and community members who have been harmed by misconduct will benefit from officers having guaranteed coverage. I want to say a word about the police labor contract. Our police insurance amendment goes into effect a year after passage, as you've already heard, allowing time for the city and the federation to negotiate the contract to determine who will pay the base rate for the insurance. And I want to say one other thing as well. In Ms. Siegel's opinion, she stated falsely that our, that a foot, that a note in our letter from our lawyer said that, and let me see if I can get her footnote correctly here. She basically claimed that, we said that the union contract takes precedence over law. There was nothing in our letter that ever implied any such thing, and we do not believe that that's correct. I've made Ms. Siegel aware of that, that error. She has, to date, refused to address it, but nonetheless, we do not believe that the union contract trumps the law. In fact, it's the other way around. Let's talk about how this amendment might work in practice. There's a long history about how professional liability works in other, in medical and other fields that we can draw from. In her opinion, Ms. Siegel states that there are a number of situations in which officers sue, when they are, have engaged in no misconduct at all, and we don't doubt that, we know that that's true. She also points out that in the situation of traffic accidents, there may be negligence, but not malfeasance, willful neglect, or bad faith. True again. In these instances, the city is required to defend and indemnify the officers, and will do so as they currently do now. In instances of misconduct, the city has absolutely no obligation to defend and indemnify the officer, and, as we have discussed, the city has sometimes chosen not to. In those cases, the insurance company would likely hire an attorney to defend the officer, and any payout would come from that insurance company. It's just that simple, folks. It's very easy to understand. Now let's talk about the financial aspects of this. Currently, judgments and settlements for police misconduct lawsuits cost the city about $2.5 million a year. You know, some years more, some years less, but that's running the average. And that doesn't include the hidden costs of legal fees for defending the city, paying officers and other city employees to be available to testify in court, depositions, et cetera, all the things that go into a lawsuit. This means we are spending about $3,000 per officer per year in judgments and settlements alone, and I'm talking about every officer here, including the ones that never cost the city one cent. These costs come from the city's self-insurance fund. In other words, we are literally budgeting for police misconduct. Because this kind of insurance has not been available in Minneapolis before, we don't know with certainty what the cost will be for it. However, our research indicates that the base rate for these policies will likely be in the range of $300 to $400, probably on the higher end of the, toward $400 per year, and that's because we, we know this from what officers purchase on their own, as well as the, the federal agent's insurance policies. If the side, the city decides to pay for this rate, base rate, and again, we hope that you do, this will still reflect a very significant savings over the current self-insurance scheme. Even if the initial cost would be higher, and we don't believe they will be, over time these costs will decrease as risk management strategies are applied that reduce the rate and number of incidents, and as police officers self-select to leave the department or become uninsurable and enforced out. We do expect that just as the base rate for professional liability insurance differs for various physician specialties, some police assignments will carry higher or lower base rates. Again, we would encourage the city to negotiate with the police union to cover the various rates for this coverage as a new benefit for the officers. Minnesota statute, let's look, what I'm going to talk about now is the City Council's obligation. Minnesota Statutes, Chapter 410, indicates that the City Council has a ministerial duty to place our proposed amendment on the ballot since our petition has been certified as having significant, sufficient signatures. There are a few exceptions that have been carved out through various lawsuits. These are if the amendment is in conflict with state or federal law or public policy, which really means a collective intent of state law, or if it, or is not a proper subject for the charter. In these exceptions, the council may decline, but doesn't have to, but may decline to place an amendment on the ballot, but may also choose to place it on the ballot and allow the process to play out in the voting booth and in the courts later. We already know that the amendment is a proper subject for the charter, as it is just a continuation of Minneapolis Charter, Paragraph 7 dot 3A2, which outlines the requirements for police officers in Minneapolis. So we already know it's a proper charter subject. Our amendment clearly does not violate public policy. In fact, it represents an improvement over the current situation. Finally, our amendment is not in conflict with state or federal statutes, as I've already outlined. Your other obligation is to submit ballot language, and we've provided you with our, apparently, however, through an email staff who, you didn't see, our suggested language. We do prefer the term "maintain", and the reason we prefer it is because it implies that the person will carry it throughout the course of their employment, and so we do prefer that term "maintain". We think it's a more proper term. But basically, that's your other obligation, is to, to select the language and put this thing on the ballot. This has been a long road. Educating the public and collecting over 15,000 signatures to get this on the ballot was no easy feat. The road has been made even longer because the city has violated law and practice in putting us through delay after delay, illegal delay, in processing our amendment. We urge you to end, to end these delays by voting to place this police insurance amendment on the ballot. You will not be in violation of Minnesota Statute 410 by placing it on the ballot, but should you choose to subvert the will of a significant portion of the population by voting no, we are prepared to go to court to seek an emergency action to get this measure on the ballot. Not only are we prepared to prove the legality of the police insurance amendment, but we will also bring in the many violations of law and practice the city has committed in its lengthy delay of processing our amendment. The city can avoid all this by voting yes to place the police insurance on the ballot. It is time to let the voters decide. Thank you.
Anything else? Not seen any?
Does anyone have questions?
I guess I have. Sure. And I'm going to ask the clerk if you could clear those speaker things from the, okay, it's, this is speaker cues, we have the old speaker cues up.
Mr. Bickin is also available to answer questions as well.
Maybe something's on. So this, folks can just let me know.
Mine.
I apologize. We have the speaker management system, and I'm somehow stuck in the last thing.
It's fine, of course.
Okay. Any questions from council members? Councilmember Kano.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to know from the committee, sort of, the impact that you think this would have on our police force in, in general. I know that I've heard some people worry that this is going to impact everybody negatively, or that it's going to lump everyone into one category and sort of, you know, punish all the officers. So I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit more about the differentiated approach and how you think this would really zero in on specific problems that we have, repeat problems within our workforce.
Thank you very much for that, that question, council members. The, this is not a punishment of the police. The great majority of police officers never have a lawsuit against them in their career. The great majority of police officers will pay the base rate for this insurance and have guaranteed coverage, which, which gives them the assurance that they are covered in any case, not just in those cases which are required by 466.07. So for the good officers, it is a benefit that they do not have now. For those officers who have a problem controlling themselves, following policy, following the law, they will be affected by this, definitely, in the sense that they will now have the disincentive of their insurance rates going up if there's a sign of significant risk. That sign may be previous lawsuits. What we have found is that in nearly every case where there is a very significant lawsuit against the city, that officer has a history, a history which has already shown a high risk, and most of the settlements, most of the things that would cause the insurance rates to go up are the cases that, you know, that will have identified those officers. Our, our police union president has said, "Well, it's like basketball. If you don't have enough fouls, you aren't playing hard enough." These are not fouls, and that indicates a cavalier attitude that is unfortunately too prevalent among some of the officers, and it's an attitude which says, "Yes, we can break the rules", and it's an attitude which leads to the kind of very vicious behavior that we sometimes see. That, this is not a game. The rules in policing are laws, and the police officers must follow those also. So we need to change a culture which says it's okay to violate people's rights, and when officers see a consequence for that, which they do not right now, and one of the reasons they don't see that consequence is because when the city takes on the defense of all officers, regardless of whether they're required to or not, it means the city has an incentive to say, "Oh, that's a very good officer. He has a very good history." And so we find that the officers who come in front of your council, and you have these private meetings every couple of weeks, those officers that come in front of you are being defended by the city, they are getting no consequences. When there are consequences, people behave better, and when there is the possibility that they will lose the ability to work for the city, that will be, in some cases, a very positive development. Thank you.
Yeah. And I'd like to add, if I could, please, they, you know, again, it's, as Dave points out, it's a handful of officers that are truly problematic, but there are no consequences for those officers. The Office of Police Contact Review, for example, at the end of the first quarter of 2016, had in those three and a half years taken in 1,323 cases from members of the community. One case out of all of those cases in, in, in three and a half years has been sustained and disciplined, one. This is not a way to address police misconduct. In fact, it sends a very powerful message that you can pretty much get away with anything you want to get away with. We have one officer on the force, Tyrone Barzy, who has had seven lawsuits in a period of about two years, and those, his lawsuits have cost the city $380,000, yet he remains on our payroll and has no consequences for that conduct. Again, not a way to address a very serious problem. And it's not just about tax dollars. It is about tax dollars, but it's not just about tax dollars. It's about real people who get really hurt. There are people in our community that are suffering, that have long-term injuries, that some people are killed. It is about that. And so whether we talk about dollars and cents and all of this other stuff, and I do believe our amendment is cheaper, is less expensive for the city, but even if it wouldn't be, there is a cost for people's lives and bodies, and that's a significant expense that we have to not ignore. So, thank you.
All right. We had one other question from Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ms. Gross and Mr. Bickin, you both are guessing as to how much it would cost for police liability insurance. Is that the case?
I wouldn't say we're guessing. I'm saying we researched it and, and our best guess, because there isn't, you know, it would just, as if we never had auto insurance, and then the state or the city council or somebody said, "Now you have to have auto insurance", it wouldn't be known at that time what it would be, but we'd have a rough idea of what it would be. And we believe it will be in the $300 to $400 range, because that's the typical policy cost, and I've checked around a number of cities around the country.
But you just, you just don't know that, right?
Well, you couldn't know with certainty, and nobody ever could, until the market opens, and frankly, it will be a variety of costs. You know, we expect that various insurance companies will come in, and they'll offer different kinds of insurance. As long as insurance meets the basic parameters, then officers are free to add other parts to the insurance, other riders, and things. to the insurance, other riders and things like that, and could choose to purchase a more expensive plan. In fact, the FBI agents have choices of a few different plans that they can select that have more coverage and less coverage. They have a minimum that they have to select, but then they can choose things and pay a little bit more money for those. So, you know, it's the same thing that you run into when you purchase your homeowner's insurance, your car insurance. It's going to be a competitive market, and different insurance companies will offer different offerings and as long as they meet the minimum threshold, then the cost will vary based on the company. So, but again, our best research shows that it would be between $300 and $400, probably closer to $400, like it was running around $370 to $380 was the average that I was getting when I did all, and we did significant research on it.
May I add just briefly? The costs are, of course, an issue. And of course, the costs of the bad policing that we have right now are an issue that you face in the Ways and Means Committee quite frequently. But cost is not the issue before you today. The issue before you today is whether this amendment is legal. And the standard on this is that you start off with a ministerial duty that requires you to vote to put this on the ballot with very narrow exceptions. Those exceptions have been opened up by the courts only for the purpose of avoiding the frustration and futility of an election that will immediately be overturned. As a result, the only exception to your being required to put this on the ballot is if you are certain beyond a reasonable doubt that this amendment is illegal.
Now, illegal, by the way, would mean manifestly unconstitutional in the language that you use.
Or specifically violating a state law. At this time, Susan Segal put out her opinion at the very last, the afternoon of the last possible day, eight weeks after we filed. We understand that in early June, she was telling the council that she could have this available in a week. That has stalled this long. We have had three working days to respond to her legal opinion, and I apologize that our letter and our annotated thing got to you so late after the end of the working day. But unless you feel that you can just simply rely on Susan Segal's opinion or you've had the time to really evaluate this for yourself, for yourselves, it is against your ministerial duty to vote to not put this on the ballot. This is a very serious question. It's a legal question. It's a legal responsibility of this council. And though we may be quieter than 15 now, we are just as determined. We have the means, the determination, and the lawyer to take this into court immediately if you vote to take this off the ballot. The people need to vote on this.
And I saw Councilmember Kano. Is this one last question for the campaign?
Madam Chair, I actually am finished with my questions. I would like to make the motion to move the resolution forward to submit this as a ballot question.
Okay. So, Councilmember Kano has made a motion. Councilmember Johnson.
I would like to speak on that one.
Okay. I will let Councilmember Kano.
Would you have the city attorney?
Well, we were, but Councilmember Kano has made a motion. She's allowed to make her motion.
If you would like to have the city attorney take the podium, I would be willing to hold my motion to have her speak.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So, we will know that Councilmember Kano has made her motion, and then Councilmember Johnson has put himself in queue. And I think if we could clear off the speaker list so we've got the motion in queue. And Ms. Segal, if you want to go ahead then, Councilmember Kano has said we will take up her motion as soon as you've had an opportunity to give us your overview.
Madam Chair and members of the council, thank you. I'm not going to repeat the legal test. I think we're all in agreement on the legal question before the council on this proposal. Real briefly, the proposal requires officers to obtain and maintain continuous professional liability insurance coverage. The proposal states that it must be the primary insurance for the officers. It must include, not limited to, but include coverage of willful or malicious acts and acts outside the scope of the officer's employment. It does allow the city to reimburse officers for the base rate of coverage, but it is prohibited from doing so for any additional cost due to personal or claims history. As Ms. Gross stated, the city has chosen to self-insure for its statutory obligations to defend and indemnify. The city has the authority now to go out into the private insurance market and to buy private professional liability insurance to cover its police officers if that is a more economic option. My assumption is that it is not a more economic option for the city, and that's why the city has chosen to self-insure. But the city does have that power now. You do not need a charter amendment or any other authority to do that. And again, that's not the question in front of the council anyhow. The defect in this proposal is that it's just in plain old conflict with state law. And state law imposes a duty on cities to defend and indemnify their employees, all their employees, not just police officers, but all their employees. Minnesota Statute, Section 466.07, says cities shall defend and indemnify their employees provided that they were acting in the performance of their duties and not guilty of malfeasance, willful neglect of duty, or bad faith. And as the petitioners pointed out, when we have come to the conclusion that employees have engaged in malfeasance, willful neglect of duty, or bad faith, we have made a recommendation to this council to not defend or indemnify them. Under, there's another provision also, Section 471.44, that relates specifically to law enforcement officers. And that imposes a duty to provide a defense to law enforcement officers against lawsuits for any type of damages in connection with an arrest. And the duty of defense there includes paying all costs of and expenses of defending the suit, including witness fees and costs of legal counsel. Now, both of these provisions preempt the police liability insurance proposal here. And I think part of this, because I've honestly been trying to understand the difference of opinion here, and I've had some trouble doing that. In the written materials that the Committee for Professional Policing have put forward, they say that this charter amendment proposal would only apply to acts that the city is not required by state law to defend and indemnify employees for. But that's not what they've written. They could have written it that way, but they did not write it that way. What the proposal states, as I've said before, is that it has to be the primary insurance and that it must include, not that it is limited to, it must include coverage for those kinds of acts that the city does not have to defend and indemnify officers for. It states must include coverage for willful or malicious acts and acts outside the scope of the officer's employment. And I think that's maybe where some of this difference of opinion comes from is thinking that their language says one thing when in fact it says something quite different. Now, the other thing about these statutes, of course, general state law supersedes any city charter provisions or any city ordinances. But the state has doubled down with these two statutory requirements and has explicitly stated that they are exclusive of and supersede all home rule charter provisions. And Section 471.44 also supersedes any other general law of the state of Minnesota. So, it's pretty crystal clear. Now, how does it conflict with these two provisions? When you're talking about defense and indemnity, that's what insurance policies do. They provide defense and indemnity. So, those are interchangeable words, really.
No, absolutely not.
Okay. Your voices in back of me disagreeing. So, what I did this morning after reading the response letter from the petitioners was I went online and Googled "police professional liability insurance", and after going through a few ads that were there for defense lawyers, the first insurance company site, the first insurance company site that popped up was for travelers. And this is what they said that they provide insurance for. And you will note that here, about halfway down the list, is defense for claims or suits. So, that's what insurance is. You're providing defense and indemnity. Now, the petitioners do include in their proposed amendment a proposal, a statement that the city may reimburse officers for the base rate of coverage. And that helps their cause. But it goes on to say that officers must be personally responsible, and it prohibits the city from paying for any additional costs due to personal or claims history. And professional liability premiums, just like your home insurance or your auto insurance, once you make a claim, guess what? Your premiums are going to go up. Your experience rating is going to go up. Close to half of all lawsuits that our office defends on behalf of police officers are dismissed in the officer's favor. Typically, that's after all discovery is completed, there are depositions taken, discovery is completed, and a summary judgment motion has been filed, and perhaps it's after trial. That's hundreds of hours of attorney and paralegal time, expert witness fees, et cetera. That's a substantial cost. No insurance company in the world is going to continue you at $400 a year after paying out for that. And I think that the committee, as much as acknowledges that in their letter, that actuaries may increase premiums. So, these are suits where the officers have not engaged in any unlawful conduct at all. Lawsuits are settled for a variety of reasons, as you know, from having sat in on closed council sessions where we've provided you with our reasons for settlement. Sometimes, it's because there is liability, and an officer has violated the policies and procedures of the police department. And the police department has opened an Internal Affairs Unit investigation. And when that's happened, you know, officers should be disciplined and ultimately terminated if they're violating the policies and procedures of the police department or violating the law. But there are a lot of reasons why cases are settled, some of which have absolutely nothing to do with whether an officer is actually engaged in malfeasance, willful neglect, or bad faith. And in all of these situations, officers would be subject to an increase in insurance premiums that they would have to pay for out of pocket. And that is how it conflicts with our statutory duty to provide defense and indemnity. Now, second independent ground here, let me catch up. Yes, is the Public Employee Labor Relations Act. Cities' police officers, as we all know, are represented by a union. The Public Employee Labor Relations Act requires employers to negotiate in good faith over mandatory subjects of bargaining. What that means is that we cannot make unilateral changes in a union contract that would violate the state public employment labor relations law. Now, there are two sections of the police contract that have been in various iterations, different words, that have been in the police federation contract since at least 1986, which is as far back as we could easily go in our office. One, Section 26.1, the first one, which basically parrots state law with regard to providing a defense and legal counsel. Cities shall provide legal counsel to defend any employee against any action or claim. Again, it basically repeats our state law obligation. And then 26.3, which states that the city may at its, may at its option, go out and buy private insurance. So, even the union contract recognizes the city's right to do that right now. But then it goes on to say that the city shall pay all premiums for such coverage. So, that is at odds with what this charter amendment proposes. So, that provides an independent ground, this conflict with the Public Employment Labor Relations Act for saying that this proposal, while I know it's a very well-intentioned, is in conflict with state law. As such, it's not a proper subject to be placed on the ballot. And again, I don't think it should be placed on the ballot. And again, I don't think it should be placed on the ballot. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm not seeing councilmembers getting queue. I'll just note, Councilmember Canno has a motion that is before us, and I would invite her if she would like to speak to her motion. And then we have a queue with a couple councilmembers in line.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to our city attorney for walking us through a detailed explanation of her position. You know, I'm really struggling with the legal framework that we're currently operating under, which continues to dispose of the lives of African-American people, Latino people, indigenous people. And as a policymaker, I think it's very important for us to think about our role in allowing our community to be a part of the decisions that we make and ensuring that we are taking into consideration the multiple legal opinions that have been presented to us today and throughout the last weeks as this issue has come forward. I do want to personally apologize to the community for having this process taken so long. I know that you all submitted your signatures weeks and weeks and weeks ago, and yet you're still on the same timeline as the minimum wage issue. And to me, that is a disservice to our residents. That makes it very difficult for us as policymakers to have enough time to weigh in on the issues with proper diligence. And I know that the community did not have enough time to respond to our city attorney's opinion, and yet you made it happen. You know, it's very hard to expect somebody who's working on a volunteer basis to put together these kinds of responses. But I'm going to say that after working with so many different individuals and experts outside of City Hall on this issue, I have come to believe that this is appropriate for our city charter. I believe that if we have enough political will to stand up together to say that it is appropriate, we can allow it to move forward. And that's one of the reasons why I'm making this motion today, to move forward the police liability proposal as a ballot question. And also because I think that the times that we're currently living in, where we are struggling to come to terms with the aftermath of the Philando Castile shooting, which has put Minnesota on national news headlines for all the wrong reasons, we need to create a new system because what we have now is not working. And so I would much rather move in that direction than be locked into, you know, a series of legal opinions, which again, there's many legal opinions here, and continue to worry about who is going to be killed next in our community. And so on that, you know, my position is that I believe that this is appropriate for us to take on as a charter amendment, and I believe that our residents should be allowed to vote on this issue in November. And that's how I would like to move this forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So we have Councilmember Andrew Johnson, who put up his little red thing, and then Council President Barb Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With these citizen petitions for charter amendments, I take them extremely, extremely seriously and do my due diligence, reading over the opinions and considering the legal arguments before us. And I know I mentioned to the organizers I had a few concerns and asked them if they could respond to that. They have, and I understand that we are on a tight timeline, and they have provided this annotated copy. And I want to let them know that I have not had a chance to read this yet, and I do plan on doing so. And so I'm going to take the rare step, which is my right at committee, to abstain from voting on this issue until I have had a chance to go over this. I have a responsibility to do that. I owe it to you, and I appreciate you responding to this. So I will go over that, and then I will make a vote, either yea or nay, by Friday on this. And if I have any questions for either Ms. Segal or for the petitioners, I will let you know. But thank you for providing this, and I understand the tight timeline and constraints which require my abstention today so I can thoroughly review this. Thank you.
So Council President Barb Johnson is in queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would move a substitute motion that the city clerk has directed to not submit the proposed charter amendment as a ballot question to the county auditor for placement on the ballot for the November 8, 2016, general election. And I just would mention, if I may, that I think our city attorney presented a reasonable and thoughtful analysis of this issue, and I appreciate the work that's been done on this. So I'm going to move that it not be put on the ballot.
Okay. So the, and I always forget a little bit what I need to do. So there's a motion to substitute before us, then we need to vote on whether to substitute and then vote on the underlying motion, whatever. Is that correct?
Madam Vice President, the substitute that's been proposed is essentially a motion that would be the opposite of the motion that's on the table, which would be an improper motion. The action to be taken is to vote on the motion that was put forward first, because the amendment offered by substitute essentially is one that makes the adoption of the motion the opposite or the negative of the main motion. It needs to be offered as a separate motion.
I see. Okay, so we will vote on Councilmember Canno's motion, and then we would take up the Council President's motion as a separate motion. Thank you very much. I'm glad I asked. All right, so I am not seeing further comment on Councilmember Canno's motion. So all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
I can't lie here in this country. Y'all let 'em do it, and they don't even have to have insurance to do it? And we pay for it? Eight hundred and fifty cops in this city. Fifty of them live here. Shame. Shame. They don't even live here, they kill us.
Thank you, sir. So there is now a separate motion in front of us, which is Council President Johnson's motion. Any discussion on that motion?
Can you please restate the motion?
Does a clerk want to help restate the motion?
The motion pending would be the adoption of a resolution that would essentially concur in the findings of the city attorney that this is not a proper subject to submit to the ballot and directing the city clerk not to submit the question to the county auditor.
Okay. So Councilmember Canno, all right. Any discussion on the Council President's motion? I'm not seeing any. All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
And the people talk.
So we had a presentation from, okay, there's been a request for the roll call on this, and we always do that as a courtesy, so the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon is absent. Canno?
No.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Andrew Johnson?
Abstained.
Yang?
Yay.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Fry?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
Chair Glidden?
Aye.
There are nine ayes, one nay, one abstention, and one absent.
Okay. So I'm now just going to file, make a motion to receive and file the two city attorney opinions that were presented before us, as well as any presentation materials that were presented from the committees to us. So those are part of the official record. So all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. We have a third item, and I am actually just going to move approval of this item. This is the strategic.
Shame. I'm ashamed. Shame. Two black people across this country. You're allowed to do it, you're out of your cell. You let them do it. You let them do it. You live here. You, city attorney, you work for them.
All right.
You work for them. It's in your best interest to make sure they don't have it. Don't shake your head. Shame.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
And brown people. Shame.
Thank you.
Shame. Who's on that pool who gets affected by the street? Who gets pulled over? Huh? How many times have I been told?
Are you going to sit and listen to that? All right. I'm going to ask if you could please leave the chamber so we could finish. Yes, sir.
That's what I want. Shame.
Thank you.
I'm afraid, I'm afraid of the cops pull me over.
Okay.
They can kill me. And then the city will pay for it?
Okay.
The city will pay for it? I live here.
Thank you, sir.
They don't even live here.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
They don't even live here.
All right.
Shame on you. It's time for some of y'all to go. It's time for y'all to go. Let's go.
All right. We need to be able to finish our business. Thank you. We have a motion to receive the report on the, sir, sir, I am asking if you could please either be able to allow us to finish our meeting. Okay?
I want to see you or your kids. What are you thinking of? How come? I want to address the people out of the city to represent me. And I'm saying, fifty cops live in this city.
All right.
Fifty. We pay for them. We pay for their stays. We pay for them to live, and y'all dissed us for fifteen dollars? And now y'all, come on. Racism. This is racism.
All right. Thank you, sir. Sir, I am asking if you could please leave now. Thank you.
If you're asking, I'm a state. If you're ordering, I'll leave.
Okay, I can do it that way, too. I didn't want to.
And that's what you want to do. I don't mind them. I'm a state.
So, all right, to everyone, I do respect that we have very strong emotions here. Thank you. But we need to be able to finish our business, and I'm asking.
I want to finish my business.
Okay.
I want to be not killed. I want the police to have some time.
Sir, you are on the record with having expressed that to us very, very strongly. I'm going to ask our security officers if you could help this gentleman leave, please.
They can do whatever the hell they want to. And that lady right there, you sit there and tell them it's not okay? We know you're the bringer. We know you're the bringer. Nobody's gonna touch me. I didn't touch nobody. I ain't said nothing. I'm just speaking my truth. You guys hurt people. You hurt people by making bad decisions. Right. Yes, and right. All right, we have one last item before us, and I am going to ask for a vote on this, which is to receive and file the workforce assessment and diversification staff directive as well as approving the enterprise workforce representation goals of hiring 41% of the city's workforce as people of color by 2022 and 45% of the city's workforce as women by 22. So is there a discussion on that motion? This was the presentation we received last cycle. All in approval, please say aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? What is your, Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a staff direction related to item number three now that it is approved, and I have worked with staff on this. It is simply moving that staff of the Department of Human Resources in conjunction with IT be directed to develop a website that will include quarterly workforce dashboards and annual enterprise EEO plans and a report back to the committee of the whole by the end of quarter one on progress of those items. I have worked with the city's coordinators' office on this language and also the mayor's office on this.
Okay, so Councilmember Johnson has moved a staff direction, which is about translating the work of human resources to an accessible website. Discussion on the motion, seeing none. All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That item is approved. And then finally, we do have on our agenda reports of committees. I don't know if there are key items that folks feel like they need to mention. Otherwise, I would ask that we be able to just adjourn our meeting. So I'm just looking to committee chairs if there is something you want to alert us to. And I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand. So with that, we have concluded our business, and we are adjourned.